Councilmember Weiss.
Recording in progress.
And I believe Councilmember Rodriguez is here.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. This evening, we have Dr. Kadri J. Webb, Senior Pastor at St. John Missionary Baptist Church. Dr. Webb.
Shall we pray?
Thank you.
Kind Father in Jesus' name, here we are again. The hollow seat of our government with one simple prayer on this evening. Thy kingdom come; Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. We pray that during our time together, justice would roll down like waters, and righteousness is a mighty stream. Let us take our role seriously. Let us not think more highly of ourselves than we ought. Instead, let us follow Your sacred command to do unto others as we'd have them do unto us. Let us think about others as we'd have them think about ourselves. We ask it now in the name of Jesus Christ the Lord. We pray. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. We have a proclamation this evening, and it's the Mayor's Monarch Pledge for 2022. And as we have been working on this together, the city and also the community, and I've heard of wonderful gardens that have been created for habitat for the monarch. Less than 1% of the Western monarch population remains, with the Eastern monarch actually the population falling to almost 90%, falling as much as 90%. So, less than 1% for the Western and maybe 10% left of the Eastern. The Federal National Wildlife, the Federation for the National Wildlife has reached out to cities, towns, counties, communities to help save the monarch. And I am so proud of the response that we have had from residents and from our city. In fact, we have a very, very short video that we want to play for you to show what the city has been doing to help save the monarch butterfly, as well as what we tend to do this year.
The monarch butterfly is an iconic species whose migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of many. Now, American mayors are taking action to help save the monarch butterfly, whose populations have declined in recent years. Through the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge, U.S. cities like Oceanside are committing to creating habitats for the monarch butterfly and pollinators, and to educate residents about how we can all make a difference at home and in our community.
Every citizen of Oceanside can make a difference by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. We are going to be doing outreach to our community internally as a city. We have a number of possibilities with respect to landscaping and community gardens.
The city committed to planting native seeds to support monarchs and other pollinators in 2021. In 2022, we began our first seeding operation here at City Operations Center. You can see the beautiful blooms behind me, which support the pollinators, take less water, and keep weeds down. Monarchs and other pollinators are essential part of our natural food web and ecosystem. They rely on specific habitats to shelter their larvae and to feed. With the success of this planting, we planted another large area at Mansby Cannon Park on College Boulevard. We're continuing to look for other areas around the city that can support milkweed and other native plants. Everyone loves butterflies and pollinators, so everybody get involved.
It's our hope that all Oceansiders will consider planting milkweed, the source of food for the monarch caterpillar, and other native nectar-producing California plants. Once the plants are well-established, minimal maintenance will be required. You'll save on water, and they will provide vital butterfly and pollinator habitats season after season. Another way to get involved is to participate in citizen science reporting. Learn more about efforts to help protect monarchs and take action.
Again, thank you, all residents of Oceanside, for really, really stepping up, as well as city employees. And I especially want to thank Terry Brown for putting this little video together. Thank you, Terry. So, next on the agenda are our consent calendar items. Items, oh, excuse me, closed session report by Mr. Mullen. Item number five.
Thank you. Council met in closed session to discuss the labor negotiation item involving the Oceanside Police Officers Association, nonsworn, and the Oceanside Marine Safety Association. Item two was conference with real property negotiator involving the Goat Hill Golf Course. Negotiation parties are the City of Oceanside and Goat Hill Park LLC. Under negotiations are price and terms for the continued lease of the real property. Item three, this council met on a pending tort claim involving NPG Asphalt Incorporated versus City of Oceanside. And finally, the council met on the city attorney appointment, I'm sorry, the city manager appointment item. And there is no action under the Brown Act on items one through four to report at this time.
And Madam Mayor, we do have public that wishes to speak on this item.
On closed session?
Closed session report.
Okay.
Mary Ellen Reese?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, and public. I'm Mary Ellen Reese from South Oceanside, and I'm speaking on behalf of Represent Oceanside. This is the message Represent Oceanside delivered to City Council prior to their closed session this afternoon. In the interest of full transparency, Represent Oceanside requests that in this closed-session discussion regarding the selection of our new city manager, that council consider bringing the community publicly into the selection process. We are recommending that representation from each of the 17 neighborhoods recognized in the Oceanside Neighborhood Planning Area map be considered and included on the selection panel as part of the transparent public input. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other requests to speak?
There are no other requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. Next are consent calendar items, items six through 33. Are there any requests from the public to pull?
No requests from the public to pull any items from the consent calendar.
Councilmember Rodriguez wishes to pull item number 33. I'd like to pull items 21, 22, and 24. Motion for balance? Motion. There's a motion by Councilmember Jensen to approve balance. Is there a second? There's a second. Let's vote.
Five-oh.
Thank you. Items 21 and 22 are the ones that I pulled are, have both to do with the Bob Maxwell Memorial Airfield and funding that is being received and also being requested from the city, as well as requests to approve plans and specifications that were not included in the staff reports. Today, we had an addendum that includes a map, as well as an explanation of where these improvements would go. Staff, will you go over those, please?
Yes. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, Vicky Gutierrez, Real Property Manager for the Public Works Department, Property Management Division. I'm going to pull up a slide for you. First of all, I'll just address, so for this, I am assuming you want to focus on the item number 21, which is related to the adoption of resolutions approving the apron reconstruction and infill grading improvements. Is that the item that you're of main concern, or both?
Item 22 addresses the request to approve the plans and specifications for the apron reconstruction and infill grading improvement project, which the report did not include a description nor a diagram.
So I'm happy to elaborate on that for you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. The picture on the, the slide on the screen talks about the plans and specifications are on file at the city clerk's office. And so this diagram, we'll share with you, and I'll kind of highlight the areas. So, the, let me get this straight. So, the apron reconstruction is the blue area that you'll notice on the screen, and the blue area exhibit represents existing pavement that will be reconstructed. The footprint of the paved area remains the same, and there is no change to the number of tie-down parking spaces. So we're also doing some minor grading improvements of that area to the new pavement service to improve the drainage. And the total reconstruction area consists of approximately 200,000 square feet. And of the grant funds, the portion of that attributable to that area is about $1.7 million. So that is, again, the blue area. There's no expansion of any area. It's just existing area that we're redoing.
Thank you. And the reason why I was specifically interested in having more of a description is because we, City of Oceanside does have an agreement with resident group that if there is any expansion contemplated, it will be done in conjunction with that group. And so I wanted to make sure that nothing was going to be violated with respect to that agreement, that legal agreement.
Absolutely. And, Honorable Mayor, that would be an entitlement process if there was an expansion of the area, and that is not taking place at this time. The other area that we are doing improvements to is located, is shown in red on the screen, and that's our infill grading area. And that area is, represents the unpaved areas between the runway and the parallel taxiway. And in these areas, we'll be excavating soil to create retention areas that will collect stormwater runoff from the runway and taxiways to prevent ponding on the pavement during storm events. There's current ponding on the airport at times, so we wanted to correct that. So again, this portion is about $770,000 of the total grant money that we, the city would be receiving.
Thank you. And as to item 21, that talks about the funding, and one of the, one of the funding amounts is a grant from the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, in the amount of $2.2 million. Yes, yes. And when we accept grants in general, that if there were to be any, well, let me, let me first say, that if there are any issues with the airport, it's either we accept all the possible things that happen at the airport, or none of it. Basically, we can't tell them, oh, we keep having these crashes, or at least two crashes in three months with one fatality. What are we going to do about that? What are you going to do about it? We can't, the City of Oceanside can't do anything about it. Is that right?
Can you restate your question, Honorable Mayor? Because that's, I'm not clear exactly what you're asking us to comment.
I think I can answer that. The, I think the issue that you've raised deals with discrimination against aeronautical users at an airport. And so that has been raised in the context of the initial approval of this Go Jump operation. The city was requiring a very, you know, detailed regulatory CUP process, and we were told by the FAA from Washington, D.C., that we could not do that because that violated our grant assurances. But there is an active investigation into this incident, so I'm not sure if I could provide much more detail than that until that investigation is done.
Is there anything that we can do short of saying this is a dangerous place to be having an airport?
To be having parachuting or an airport?
This, in terms of the individual activity of the parachuting, can we do anything about that?
Yeah. According to the FAA, we cannot, the city cannot prohibit parachuting.
So it's either we have this-
I think it's up to the airport operator to work with their lessee, which was kind of, sort of getting outside the scope of the item that's in front of us right now. So, but I think we need to get the results of the investigation from the NTSB and then work with our lessee to determine if there's any remedial action that they need to take with their tenant.
And according to the lease, they're not in violation of their lease at the time. The FAA did meet with them for about six hours at, with Go Jump, and they did not make any siding at that time, so that's part of their whole investigation. So, at this time, they are not, they have not been shut down.
And Mr. Borrego, do we have any other information? I understand that you were going to be looking into this as well.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, nothing that I would add beyond what's been shared by Mr. Mullen and Ms. Gutierrez, but it's something that we are definitely looking at. And if we do have any ability to work with the airport operator to get a better handle on the tenants, we would certainly do so.
Thank you. And as to the general, what I started to say about the general, generally, when we accept grants, it's for a period of 20 years that we cannot do anything with respect to changing the airport in any way, is what I understand. Councilmember Weiss?
So this item is not going to be evaluating lengthening the runway to accommodate larger planes?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to at least bring those up because bottom line is, we, we can't tell the airport what to do. I mean, I think I tried for two or three years to come up with ideas and how we can address the many concerns that we receive, complaints that we receive from the community. And each one, we basically struck out. I struck out, the city attorney struck out. And so I thought it was important for the community to hear that, as well as the fact that this does involve a $2 million grant from the FAA. Is there a motion?
Move approval, staff recommendation of both items.
There's a motion and a second, and I have some, some very grave concerns about the safety of the activity that's going on there, so I am going to be voting against. Thank you. Let's vote.
Four-oh-one. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Item number 24 is approval of revisions to the city's guidelines for determining findings of substantial conformance. And the staff can come up to address this. The staff report basically indicates that we're broadening the authority for the planner to, if there is a change, I believe it was 10 units or less, that it does not have to have a separate hearing.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, to clarify, currently under the existing substantial conformance guidelines, the limit of number of units that can be reduced in a project is 10% without triggering a new hearing. Staff has recently received inquiries from several applicants on reducing a project beyond 10%, which would require a new hearing, which is not the best use of city time and resources. And so when a project that reduces a unit beyond a 10%, and it doesn't lead to any additional environmental impacts, the proposed guidelines will allow staff to act on that without requiring a new hearing on that project.
Thank you. And it would be staff's opinion as to whether or not it would change, it would require a new environmental study. Is that right?
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, it would be subject to the technical studies associated with that substantial conformance application. So it would have to be documented that no new environmental impacts would result in a reduction of units within a given project.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Second? Okay. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Four-oh-one. Sanchez, no.
Item number 33 is acceptance of the city treasurer's report for the quarter ended March 31, 2022, and adoption of a resolution approving the City of Oceanside's investment policy. This was pulled by Councilmember Rodriguez.
So it's unfortunate our city treasurer is not here. I had some questions for him. But with the market changing, I have some concerns, and it looks like staff has recommended, or the treasurer's office has recommended some, maybe council policy changes, and I'm going to want some clarification on that. But our portfolio's unrealized market value loss was almost $15 million at March 31, 2022, up from an unrealized loss of just $1 million. So, so up almost 14 times that loss with just three months prior. The loss is due to the increase in interest rates. We all knew that rates were so low, and they were only going to stay low for so long. And so, you know, in preparation for increased rates, my concern is why the city treasurer and his office did not anticipate that and allowed some of our non-local agency investment funds to suffer so much loss. In further reading this, the staff report, it states, while this is, this will be common across all municipalities, the city's unrealized loss is larger as a result of the percentage, high percentage of callable securities, which are high-risk securities within the portfolio when the market fell due to the COVID-19 pandemic in early 2020. At, on December 31, 2019, the city held approximately 60% of our investments outside of the local agency investment fund in callable securities. What the heck? Which is considered risky when interest rates fall. We all know interest rates are going to fall. The investment policy was revised in June of 2020 to cap the maximum amount of callable securities in the portfolio at 25% to prevent this from occurring again. So my question is, is, are we adding in, was there existing council policies on financial controls with respect to high-risk investments? That's my first question. And then my second question is, is, are we modifying our council policies to ensure this never happens again? And how did we come up with 25% of callable securities? Why not less, especially knowing we're moving toward a recession? Like what, what is the, the strategy, or what's a safe strategy for other municipalities? That's, that's my two questions.
So the treasurer's report is actually done by Mr. Steve Hodges. He's the manager, but is reviewed by and is submitted, reviewed by Ms. Jill Moya, who is the Financial Services Director. So basically, this is done with the three of you. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. I can answer some of these concerns.
Okay. So you can answer some of those questions.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moya.
First of all, I would like to address the concern about the unrealized loss, the $14 million unrealized loss. This is really just like a paper loss. We will actually never realize that loss because what it means is that the, the current market value of the investments that we're holding is less than the value of the investments when we purchase them. So if we were to sell them today, we would realize that loss, but we always hold all of our investments until maturity, so we will never actually realize that loss. In terms of financial reporting, we're required to book that, or show that amount, but we will not realize that loss. In terms of-
Really quick, before you move on. So if we had the callable portfolio policy capped at 25%, what you're telling me is we would, we would be in the exact same position today, or we'd be in a better position?
Wait, the unrealized loss isn't just related to the callable bonds. It's related to all of our investments, all of our investments right now because of the rising interest rates, since we purchased those investments a while back when the interest rates were less. Now they're not as worth as much, and so the value is less. And so, because our entire portfolio is showing that unrealized loss, it's not directly related to the callable bonds, although they have also gone down in value.
Okay. So but we're, so we're changing our financial policies because we had 60% of our, you know, outside our LEAF in callable securities, correct? So we're, we're changing that policy. Are we doing that through this agenda item?
So this agenda item is actually revising Section 8 of the investment policy, and we're allowing for more investment in corporate medium-term notes and commercial paper, just to give us more opportunities for investment and to capitalize on the current environment of rising interest rates. So it's giving us more opportunities. It's still conservative and in line with the California code.
So on the staff report, it says the investment policy was revised. Where is that in writing? And can that be incorporated into the council policy?
So it highlights what was revised. Are you talking about-
No, no, I'm asking, it, it says because of 60% of our outside LEAF investments were in callable securities, that's too risky. So staff, it looks like, made, revised the policy in June of 2020 to cap the maximum amount of callable securities in the portfolio at 25%. Previously, it was at 60%, now it's at 25%. Where is that in writing? And can we get that in writing on our council policy to ensure it stays that way in the future?
Sure. I would need to double-check, but my guess is that we bring this policy to council every year, and so this year, that was the change that was proposed and made. But we can get that information.
Made by who? And where is it in writing? Who has authority to make that change?
So it would be a similar report that you're looking at right now, but in this year, in 2019, they, our treasurer and treasury manager would have brought the policy forward to council with the proposed change. That's the only way we can make any changes to the investment policy.
Okay, got it. So right now, it's at 25, based on council's decision, not staff or the treasurer?
Correct, yeah. We, any changes that are made to the investment policy are brought forward for council approval.
Can you confirm that?
My understanding is that that, the policy amendment you're referring to was already approved by the council in June of 2020 with the annual review of the investment policy at that time. That's what the staff report indicates.
But that was a recommendation.
And if that's not accurate, we'll report back to you. But that's how I understand, that we've already approved that change.
So it's in, it's in agendize somewhere. I didn't, I just didn't see council policy modified, modified to incorporate.
It's not, I believe it's not being done with this. There are changes reflected in this year's investment policy report, but that one's already been implemented, to my knowledge.
Okay. All right. That was my biggest concern, is can we keep this permanent and not have so much risk?
If I could follow up on my answer, there are additional policy changes that are being discussed with the Citizens Investment Oversight Committee. So you have some changes in front of you that have all been agreed upon. There are some additional changes that the ad hoc committee to the CIOC is looking at, and we intend, I think, staff intends to bring those forward in August with additional recommendations.
Good to go. Thank you. No further questions. Move, move approval and accept the report.
There's a motion. Deputy Mayor, kime?
I'll second, but I do want to comment that this is, the city treasurer continually states how he's there to oversee the treasury, and then when we actually have questions asked, he's not at this meeting. So I do hope in August, when something comes back to make changes, that he can be here and explain why and take responsibility for that. So thank you. Let's second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to accept the report and adopt the resolution approving the City of Oceanside's investment policy. Please vote.
Motion approved. Five-oh.
Please address, please silence your cell phones. Okay, we're on general items. Item number 34 is adoption of a resolution approving and implementing the compensation plan for unrepresented employees effective July 1, 2022. We have a report by Robert O'Brien, interim deputy city manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. Robert O'Brien, interim deputy city manager. Before you this evening is a proposed updated revision to the compensation plan for unrepresented employees. This brief presentation that I will be providing will cover an overview of the group's composition, the key elements of the revised compensation plan, and the estimated net new cost impact of the changes over the course of two fiscal years. The unrepresented group ranges from support staff on up to management and executive classifications, including the city manager and the city attorney. In total, the unrepresented group is comprised of 130 active, full-time, part-time benefited employees and 277 hourly extra help employees. Now, I- Now, historically, the city council has approved changes to the compensation plan's wages and benefits that are alike to those that were adopted or are adopted for the Oceanside City Employees Association, which is commonly referred to as OCA. The key economic elements of the recently approved OCA agreement are equivalent to those proposed under the compensation plan for unrepresented employees. In summary, the key changes to the compensation plan are as follows. All classifications, including the city manager and the city attorney, shall receive the following increases: 2.5% in July of 2022, 3.5% January of 2023, and 2.5% July of 2023. These same increases will also be applied towards all the hourly extra help classifications. In addition, the vacation accrual rates shall be adjusted to match those that were previously approved for other bargaining unit employees. A special salary adjustment of 2.5% will also be applied in this agreement to the five classifications that are listed on the slide. And finally, as approved for under the terms and guidelines of the American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA, all current full-time unrepresented employees actively employed on or prior to April 25 of 2022 shall receive a one-time, non-perceivable stipend in the amount of $2,252. Overall, the net new cost of the proposed changes to the compensation plan through the end of fiscal year 2023, '24 is 2.6 million. In conclusion, staff recommends the adoption of the proposed changes to the compensation plan for unrepresented employees effective July 1, 2022. Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, I appreciate your time and attention, and I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
There are no requests from the public on this item.
Thank you. There's a motion by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Weiss. Let's vote.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Motion approved, five oh.
Thank you. Next, item number 35 is approval of the spending plan for $16.5 million of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, and $5.4 million in ARPA lost public sector revenue funds, round two. We have a report by Mr. Michael Gossman, Assistant City Manager. Mr. Gossman?
Yeah, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Michael Gossman, Assistant City Manager. I'm here today to request council to approve the second round for ARPA spending, which also includes $5.4 million in lost public sector revenue funds. Some background to this, on March 11, 2021, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan Act into law. ARPA included $32.3 million in funds for the city to be used on a variety of COVID-19-related items. You'll recall that on August 4, 2021, City Council approved a spending plan for $16.2 million of these monies. That represents the first round of funds that we received from the federal government. Also, just to note, since August 4, 2021, City Council has approved an additional $1.8 million in additional appropriations that included money for the hotel voucher program, increase to the allocation for nonprofit grants of $650,000, bringing it up to a $1 million total. The implementation of a downtown shuttle program at $320,000 and a higher local program Phase 2 of $120,000. One of the directions that we received from council on August 4 was to go and do, and to increase the amount of community engagement, seek direction from the community in terms of where they wanted to see these funds spent. The staff did that. We held five community meetings that were facilitated by a professional facilitator to get that feedback. Conversations with the community were also held during several community events to better understand local priorities. And we also made surveys available in English and Spanish, and even went around door-to-door knocking on people's doors to get to, ask them to complete the survey so that we could understand what their priorities were. What the communities' top priorities were, based on all of that surveying and those meetings, it included access to mental health and healthcare, youth services, services for seniors, affordable childcare, job employment training, job creation retention, sand replenishment, and addressing homelessness. Those priorities, along with council priorities and the rules around the spending of ARPA, helped inform the proposed spending plan that we put together. So that included $3.4 million for building stronger communities, and I'll go into detail on what that means in a second. It included $3 million for supporting the public health response, $4.1 million for addressing negative economic impacts, and $6.1 million in investments in infrastructure. So for building stronger communities, that includes $890,000 to, for upgrades to the facility and the operations of the John Landis Recreation Center. It includes $220,000 to continue the open gym program, which has been popular since it was implemented last year, so that's $220,000. It also includes $1.75 million for much-needed rehabilitation at the Crown Heights Resource Center. And it includes, also includes another $500,000 for the hotel voucher program for homeless while the construction and the renovation of the navigation center on Oceanside Boulevard takes place. Supporting public health response, that included $950,000 in direct costs. Those are costs that the city did bear as a result of COVID, and this reimburses the city for those costs. Otherwise, that would come from general fund. A lot of those costs have to do with the leave program that the city implemented for staff during the pandemic. It also includes $2 million of employee retention incentive pay, which was part of packages and related to the bargaining and the, and labor agreements. For addressing negative economic impacts, we are recommending $4 million for sand replenishment and $140,000 for other economic development projects. It also includes investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. That's $4 million for pure utility upgrades, which are much needed, $1 million for miscellaneous storm trade projects, including one on Cleveland Avenue, and $1.1 million for utilities at the El Corazon Park Site Number 1. As I mentioned, part of the ARPA allowed cities and municipalities across the country to replace revenues that they lost as a result of COVID. Originally, we, the City Council on August 4, approved $12.3 million to go to lost public sector revenues. But rule clarifications by the Department of Treasury that came out in Jan, in January of this year have reduced this to $10 million. 4.6 of that has already been appropriated by the City Council under separate action. And then the balance of that, the balance, or $5.4 million, is recommended for the following. It includes a staffing of code enforcement officers that were previously funded by CDVG, and that's, which is no longer eligible, emergency management and EMT response costs of $350,000, library teams work program, which would otherwise have expired because the grant expired. Well, this will allow us to continue that at $40,000. Library technology replacement at $80,000. $100,000 to the arts commission so they can continue implementation of the OCSY Arts Plan. $110,000 to two limited-term positions in the library. $250,000 for a document imaging system that will increase transparency and efficiency within the city, but importantly, as I mentioned, public transparency. $200,000 for a library facility study. $500,000 for miscellaneous beachfront and downtown aesthetics and maintenance. This just gives us an opportunity that if we see something downtown or in the beachfront that needs some upkeep, some sprucing up, we have some funds available, and we can just do that quick. It's not a capital project, but I think it can make a lot of difference in our core downtown and beachfront areas. We also have $717,000 set aside for civic center deferred maintenance and security improvements. This is our home. This is where we're going to be for a long time. We need to make sure that it's maintained and kept up. It's also kind of a jewel of the downtown area, so we want to make sure it looks nice for the public. It also includes $1.7 million for a COC roof. Obviously, keeping our roofs in shape and, and on a regular replacement cycle helps us maintain the integrity of our buildings. I also included here parks access and improvement grants. That's $1 million where we can partner with local community groups or sports groups and make some real improvements to our parks that will increase the amount of parks access we have and deal with some of the scheduling issues that we have. But it's really focused on access and equity within our parks. And then lastly, we have $200,000 set aside for design work on McNeil Road, which is a, is a road that's in, much, needs some improvements to the road, but also the storm drains, storm drainage system on that road. So that, that wraps up my presentation. I'm available for any questions. But once again, we're recommending that the City Council approve the spending plan for $16.5 million of ARPA funds and $5.4 million in lost public sector revenue funds.
Thank you. Any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, we have three requests from the public. Our first speaker is John Rouse, to be followed by Jimmy Knott, to be followed by Sandra Martinez.
Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor Kyrm, City Council, staff. My name is John Rouse. I'm the president of the San Malo Association in South Oceanside. First of all, many thanks go out to all of you for your efforts to heal the many residual effects of the pandemic that has had on our city's residents and businesses throughout the thoughtful allocation of funds from the ARPA. Making shoreline sand replenishment a key element of staff's recommendation shows a meaningful understanding of sand's key part in the economic health of Oceanside. The pandemic came roaring in during 2020 and brought with it devastating health implications. Because of that, we were soon facing many cautionary restrictions and public apprehension that caused scaled-back visits to local retail shops, restaurants, supply shortages, decrease in tourism, and ultimately, many business slowdowns and some closures. The pandemic has finally waned, and the opportunity to jumpstart our recovery here in Oceanside will be helped by the ARPA funds earmarked for Oceanside. We have another large-scale issue on our hands in our city, which is key to helping us manage out of the economic pains left by the pandemic. It's the lack of sand on our beaches. Without it, we not only hinder access to the beaches that are intended to serve Oceanside, our neighbors, our neighboring cities and visitors, we slow the economic recovery by asking our residents and businesses to move forward with one hand tied behind their back. I urge all of our City Council members to vote in favor of staff's recommendation to allocate at least $4 million of the ARAP Round 2 funds to Oceanside sand replenishment. However, please do not stop there. Sand on our shores, from the harbor to the mouth of the Buena Vista Lagoon, need to continue as an urgent matter of focus for the city, both replenishment and retention. Literally, Oceanside's relevancy relies on your skilled, swift, and unrelenting leadership on this subject. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. I have basically two points to make. One was requested of me by former senior services director Homer Post, who basically encouraged me well before and during the public input period that was taking place. And he says, anything ever happened to me, to please speak out for him. And what that was, asking for any senior services that are health-related, that we need to take this funding and somehow make sure that the health-related senior services, transportation. He had a goal of having a track over near the Country Club Lane facility to be established for senior exercise programs, things like that. He wanted us to put in mind, at least to investigate it, maybe do some initial planning. That's number one, and I'm carrying that on for him. The other one is one which I want to take and bring forward, and that's for each of our 17 communities that have been recognized by the staff of our city, and that is enhance wastewater detection of any future viruses so that we can take and have advanced action, and we can direct that action as soon as possible. But it's going to take an infrastructure beyond what we have right now. And this would be a very good use of some of the funding and a direct use of the funding that we are receiving. It is something that is being used throughout the nation, and it's being used effectively with all the variants of the coronavirus. If the coronavirus is just one virus, there might be other viruses coming up in the future. I would encourage you to think about that and start planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Martinez?
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. I noticed staff is recommending $2.95 million to support the public health response, which includes public, public communication effort. I suggest using some of these funds to create a program to educate people and teach critical thinking. This funding can provide education to inform the public of the dangers of the COVID injection vaccinations. If we do not fund and address this issue right now, the economic impact from disability and deaths in the working population will be devastating in the Oceanside community. In 2021, after the introduction of the COVID-19 vaccine, Lincoln National Life, the country's fifth-largest insurer, reported a staggering increase of 164% in death benefits for non-COVID death. This is important because these were people who are gainfully employed. They were not elderly. The age group was between 18 and 45, and so they were overall generally healthy. One America Insurance confirmed a 40% increase in all-cause mortality in the fall of 2021, right after the COVID vaccine requirements were implemented on many workers. The range from insurance company data is between 25% and 60% increase for all-cause mortality in the working population, whereas the increase in 2020 was only 9%. Year after year, the number of disabled workers is steadily around 28 million in the U.S. However, in 2021, not in 2020, but in 2021, disability claims increased by 3 million, over 10%. Never has happened before. We have a whole new condition called SAD, Sudden Adult Death Syndrome, where people die suddenly for no reason at all. Yet sudden adult death of unknown origin seldom occurred before 2021. Athletes have been the most public victims of this syndrome. The consistent average yearly death rate of athletes prior to 2021 was 28 per year. In 2021, that number was 394. In 2022, it's going to be much higher. So what changed in 2021? What change could have affected the health of so many people? The answer is the COVID injections. We have plenty of data, research, and studies, yet some people still don't see the connection. Teaching critical thinking skills needs to be a priority. This is a wonderful opportunity to educate and present complete information to Oceanside residents, enabling them to make well-informed health decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other requests to speak from the public?
There are no other requests to speak from the public on this item.
Thank you. Back to the council, Councilmember Weiss.
I have a question for staff. At one point in time, we had looked at converting Jefferson Middle School to Turf and Lights, and I know we had submitted a grant. Is there room in the spending plan to review that and potentially move forward with that?
Yeah, that's definitely potentially one place where that, in the lost public sector revenue line item, I included the $1 million for, for partners, for projects that we could partner with the community with. And that's exactly the type of project that I was thinking about.
Thank you. Move approval, staff recommendation.
There's a motion and a second. I, I do have some questions. At the, about a year ago, we approved, we had a hearing regarding the first part of the ARPA funds, which was about half, $16 million. And in the budget was half of, half of the $200,000 that was proposed for the entire, that is $100,000 for the first year for after-school programming, after-school programs at the poverty neighborhoods, and actual programming, not, not, which we also need, infrastructure improvements. Were any, did any of those funds go towards Crown Heights, Libby Lake, East Side for after-school programming?
So originally, as you'd mentioned, the, we had earmarked $200,000 in Round 2 funds for what we're saying is investing in disadvantaged communities. That number is now 200,000. That number is now $2.9 million, so markedly higher.
Right. I'm just asking the first question, because I only have 10 minutes, right?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Did any funds actually go to programming at these very specific neighborhoods?
At John Landis, yes. In the John Landis Recreation Center.
I understand John Landis, that's a, that was a new program, but as to these other three neighborhoods?
No.
Okay. At that same hearing, we heard from community leaders from the at-risk neighborhoods, and there, there was support from the council for a survey to find out what in these at-risk neighborhoods, what, what did the neighborhood, neighbors want, the residents want. And I believe it was Councilmember Rodriguez who said, let's put money into this survey if we have to. I think Councilmember Jensen also agreed, and I think there was general agreement on this. There was a survey, there was no independent survey, but staff and a whole bunch of people in the community went through the whole trouble of putting a lot of time and effort into these surveys. They were like very long, 11, 12 pages, which took a lot of work to do. And we have a couple of lines here that refer to it, that big effort, and that was top priorities were access to mental health, that's true, counseling services was a big one, youth services, basically after-school programming, that was, that was again, a huge one, services for seniors at these, again, these neighborhood places, and affordable childcare. And there were different ways of being able to expand affordable childcare that were, that were presented. Where is that in the proposal for these four, now four neighborhoods?
So in this, in what we're proposing, those, not every single idea or topic necessarily we were able to fund, just because we have a limited...
Right.
Yeah.
One or, there's like four or five, okay? So at any of these, where in your proposal is, is there funding for after-school programming, either for youth or for seniors, for these at-risk neighborhoods? And that's where the request was from?
That was, we did receive requests for that, and we did get that input, but we also got input for a whole universe of other types of programming and, and activities and projects. Okay.
Is there anything in here?
No.
Nothing, right?
No.
Okay. And that is my big disappointment, because I did work with then-city manager Deanna Lawson, who basically promised she would get these programs out, knowing that we have less public safety out there, and knowing that, you know, a crime has risen, these after-school programs pay, cost us a lot less, and yet, and for, to address like high crimes, educational attainment, better educational attainment, going back to, you know, helping families go back to work, all of that, and none of that is addressed here, right?
If I can add to that, with your permission, is that one of the things, one of the challenges we have when we have one-time funds such as ARPA is, is not creating positions or programs that are ongoing, because we don't have ongoing funding to support that. There are other opportunities that I think we'll be looking at in the future where we can do those types of programs, such as Measure X, but with ARPA, when you have one-time funds to create...
And I definitely understand that, and I apologize for cutting you off, because I don't have that much time.
No, it's okay, I understand.
But bottom line is that this was a very critical time, when families had money in the bank, had childcare, had their jobs, and so this was basically an interim program. So, and that is what I was asking for, at the very least. So I am very disappointed. I'm hoping that some of these funds can actually be routed that way, because we are in dire need of that, and it would cost us a lot less, and it would certainly create a lot less victims if we go that route. Councilmember Rodriguez?
So I appreciate the mayor bringing that up. I think staff has done a phenomenal job, and from my perspective, in outreach to the community, speaking to key stakeholders. You took some of the feedback and kind of soundbites from our last council meeting, went to the community, came back to us. You, from my understanding, you interviewed each one of us on a Zoom to go over all of our concerns and questions before we sit on this diet, diets in front of the public. And so at that time, we re-engaged those programs that were brought up, and, and the viability and the limited funding opportunities, and you, and staff clarified on there, you know. I know for my community, I think after-school programs and childcare was, was a priority, but I'm satisfied from a prioritizational standpoint where these one-time funds are going, and if I had any concerns, I would have brought those up to you during that Zoom call, and you addressed all my concerns. So from my perspective, I think staff has done a great job with the limited amounts we have. We have a lot of needs in this city, and we need to continue to be a business-friendly city and cut waste where we can, so we can expand. But until then, I'm satisfied, and so I'd like to move approval, subject to anybody else's feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to state, and I know I still have about five minutes left, I'm not going to use all of it, but I did constantly bring that up. I must have brought it up at least 25 times, and I had the impression that I was being heard. I was, I had the impression that, that staff was acting on this, and I, again, want to say, I'm disappointed that the report came out with nothing, with all those efforts. I mean, we created events so that we can get residents together, so that we can do all these interviews, all these surveys, and if we knew that they were going to be ignored, then why did we have to go through that? I don't understand this whole community, and, and we're even mentioning them as, as a group, as a category, and yet, we're completely ignoring the community, the community's hardest hit by ARPA, $32 million, and we're completely ignoring them, and that's, that's very difficult for me. Deputy Mayor Keim?
I have...
Number four.
I have some concerns with the, I'm completely ignoring communities, that we did do robust outreach, and this is the first time I'm hearing that the mayor's disappointed with the ARPA funding after we've done a year working with our second round. I would have liked to have seen some problem solving. Is there a point, Madam Mayor, before this, when you brought specific programs or ideas or said, we're not doing enough, instead of on the dais now? Because these are important projects to me, but I'll tell you what's also important. I think our city did a good job of this, is one-time money should be used for one-time costs, and you're watching that across the state and across the countries, as ARPA money is getting used to grow these programs that are not only going to keep having recurring costs, but they're going to get bigger over time. And when we have a looming recession, not only have we created programs that we can't staff or fund anymore, but then we're taking stuff away from other things. So we, I think we're very prudent in the city, and we shored up a lot of capital needs that gives us the ability to use Measure X, to use our general fund for these different programs. But again, I, I would have been very happy to partner and try to help get something that's appropriate funding mechanism of ARPA in, in any of your neighborhoods, which I spent many years in, in the police department, and those are important things, but on the dais here, and this is a challenge, we've had this many months to go through this. I do think staff did a great job. I want to commend you for your work, because it was a long process, and we did hear from the community. We heard about homelessness, we heard about the beach sand problem, we heard about these other things, but again, we have 176,000 people, 16 million dollars a year. I mean, it's, it's great money to help, but it, we have to use it in the right way. And again, going forward, I hope the way we use it gives us the ability to leverage our other revenue sources to take care of some of those programs. But we need specific programs and ideas, and we're working in a team environment to get them done, but I second the motion.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor, actually, you, you agreed with me a year ago, and I have been echoing those thoughts, in fact, supporting the surveys, and Mr. Borrego?
Honorable Mayor and council members, I did want to mention a couple of things. So I can tell you that when staff went back and looked at the second tranche of funding, one of the things that was really important to us was to focus on the long-needed capital improvements in some of our disadvantaged communities, which is why we allocated such a large chunk of money to the Americanization School or the Crown Heights Resource Center to support those future uses. And so, in doing that, and as also, as mentioned during Michael's presentation, we allocated a significant amount of money towards the Landis Recreation Center, including physical improvements there and programming at that location as well. We also doubled the expanded gym programs, also with a focus on, you know, catering to the needs of our youth as well, to the extent that there is the ability to use some of that money into additional programming, we can certainly look to do that, but I do want to make sure that there's a clear understanding that we did focus on many of the needs of our disadvantaged communities by the list that we did come up with.
And Mr. Borrego, it was actually at my request that you, that you look into funding all those infrastructure dire needs for the, of the community. So I do appreciate that. And by the way, the open hours at the gym, that's actually going to close after a certain time. There's actually several things in here that are very short-term and not intended to go further than a year or two. So I understand that $32 million, how do you divide the pot? It's difficult, right? But the one community, and I do hope that you will look at that, instead of having open gym hours, which really doesn't go to any of these neighborhoods, to go, well, it might go to Melba Bishop Park, that, that you reroute some of this, so that it does get to those families that, that really need it. So, but I'm hearing that you're saying that you are going to be looking into that. Is that correct, Mr. Borrego?
What I would say is that if we are unable to spend some of that money, then we could certainly look to reallocate it towards other programming, assuming that we have the ability to, you know, staff it, for one. That's always going to be one of our concerns, but yes.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
I want to clarify point of order. We are voting on staff's recommendations, nothing more, nothing less. If there is additional things you would like to get done, Mayor, I have partnered with you on a council agenda in the past. I'm sure another council member will partner with you. These are important issues, and I just, I just don't want this lingering over staff's head with direction from one member. I, you know, I want to move on, on this, nothing more, nothing less, and if we need to do more, then it may need to come back for a future council meeting.
Yeah, I think that the categories are wide enough and actually call out those communities, that this can be done with, with this kind of authority that we're looking at. And I'd like to, my vote would be yes, with the exception of having, having more money towards the at-risk neighborhoods.
Motion approved, 4-0, 5-0 on the rest, and we'll, we'll make sure that the minutes reflect that as well.
Thank you. Item number 36 is award of a contract to Cox Construction Company of Vista, California. In the mat, oh, it's 6 o'clock. So we do have to stop with the general items and go to our 6 o'clock items, time certain. We have item number 39, which is adoption of a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's certification of an environmental impact report with associated mitigating, mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and approval of tentative map, development plan, and density bonus to allow the subdivision of a 7.38-gross-acre site into 54 single-family residential lots surrounding a private loop road with a central green space and guest parking in several locations throughout the site located west of Los Adbolitos Boulevard at the Aspen Street and Polo Road intersections, and situated within the Sandy Ray Neighborhood Planning Area. The applicant is Concordia Communities. Appellant is Jerry Craft, and I believe you also have, you also specified a contact person, so there are two of you that were named. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff, the applicant, and public. Staff, applicant, appellant, public.
Staff, the public.
Staff, applicant, public.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence?
Me, staff, and the public.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We did receive correspondence on item number 39, and all correspondence has been forwarded to the council prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Before we begin with the report by Mr. Richard Greenbauer, is that you?
Yes, Honorable Mayor Sanchez.
Okay, it's a new look. Or maybe I haven't seen you in a while. Maybe I haven't seen you in a while. I want to make sure that we are agreed as to the process, so we will be hearing after we get the report from city staff, we will be hearing from the appellant, who is Mr. Craft, and that will be for 20 minutes. You can reserve any of that time for rebuttal, Mr. Craft. So if you want, I can let you know when you've got five minutes left. And then we will hear from the applicant, which is Concordia Communities. You also get 20 minutes. Do we have Concordia here? Yes, okay.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, they are in attendance.
Okay. But you do not get to reserve time for rebuttal. So those are the three, hopefully, Mr. Greenbauer, you're not going to be taking 20 minutes, but that was a joke, sorry. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and start with Mr. Greenbauer, who is a principal part planner. Mr. Greenbauer?
I'm getting it. Honorable Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor Keim, distinguished council members. Richard Greenbauer in the planning division here to bring forward the appeal of the Planning Commission's action for the subject Development Cypress Point, which includes three entitlements, tentative map, development plan, and density bonus. The applicant's representatives are in attendance this evening. They do have a presentation, so to err on the side of Keim, I will shorten my presentation so as not to have redundancy in the delivery here. With that, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's certification of the IAR with the associated mitigation monitoring reporting program, as well as the findings of fact approving the tentative map, development plan, and density bonus for this project. Little background, the project was approved by the Planning Commission unanimously. It was appealed within the timelines by Jerry Craft, and there were seven grounds of appeal that were brought forward, and staff has analyzed those. I've analyzed those in a very lengthy staff report, and I'll make myself available for any questions regarding those bill points. With that, just a little history on the site. This is at the Terminus Apollo Road. It's surplus lands. Back in February of 2003, the city council declared it surplus and solicited to sell the property. Back in 2019, they approved a purchase and sell agreement with Concordia Communities LLC, and subsequent to that, in 2020, agreement was amended and deleted, the requirement for construction of single-family homes. The Density Bonus Surplus Act allowed a total of 44 units on this, or the existing zoning allowed for 44 units on the site. With the density bonus request, they could see up to 54 units, and that's our 57 units allowed, but they came in with 54 units, so just under the, the allowed density bonus that they're seeking. Overall, with the project, there was one, or none requested as far as incentives and concessions, so no monetary aspects there, but there were five waivers dealing with overall lot size, lot with setbacks, lot, front yard landscaping requirements, as well as the fence and wall heights and planable retaining wall requirements. Provided a brief site plan illustrative showing the layout and the separation from the existing homes to the east, and you can see that the 7.3-acre site at the, or at the intersection of Aspen Street and Polo Street intersections, with a single-family zoning designation and, and a comprehensive general plan designation, proposes to bring 54 single-family homes, two stories in height, 1,200 to 1,700 square feet in size for each of the units. Within the staff report, you can see the waivers that I just covered and what was requested, and then the rest of the development standards and how it is consistent with the zoning beyond those waiver requests. Overall, they're bringing forward a, a series of plans, three-plan types with four different elevations and materials, sort of bringing a lot of diversity within the subdivision. With that, you can see that I provided a typical farmhouse architectural style illustrative just to show you what would be brought forward in the community. And once again, another illustrative. With that, I'll get into the appellant's issues. The first one was dealing with subdivision design and consistency with the surrounding neighborhood. As I previously stated, the council did approve an amendment to the plan to allow two-story units, and there's nothing that prohibits two-story units throughout the neighborhood to the east, so those could still come forward if anyone wanted to redevelop in that manner. Single-family residential use is compatible with the RS Zone District in the existing community, and compatible in square footage and sizes with the existing... community and compatible in square footage and sizes with the existing community. Appellant issue number two dealt with public safety, fire, and airport safety. I won't get into details. We do have all the professionals in attendance this evening that can speak to those items, should you desire further communication on that. But within the EIR, all areas were evaluated dealing with public safety as well as fire and the Oceanside Municipal Airport land use compatibility plan, and we were found to be consistent with all those elements. The third area that the appellant brought forward is traffic and greenhouse gases have not been adequately analyzed and addressed. And again, staff has cited the EIR sections for the City Council to consider where they were reviewed and analyzed in depth, and everything can be mitigated to a level below significance. Issue number four is dealing with biological resources and the mitigation of those resources. Again, the EIR did a thorough analysis on that, and there, it will be mitigated consistent with our subarea plan, multiple habitat conservation program. And in addition, the applicant has agreed to enhance additional open space areas outside of the project site of by 0.9 acres where they're not required to, but in a good faith effort, they wanted to bring forward some additional enhancement of biological resources off-site. Issue number five is dealing with the no thought or analysis on impacts to existing neighborhood in the overall design, which I previously discussed. It does, it is consistent with the overall design, though it's not all single-family and they're smaller lot sizes with density bonus and the need for housing in the state. It meets the state code for density bonus. Issue number six was dealing with potential impacts to Native American cultural resources. Staff did complete the AB 52 required discussions with the Native Americans, and all mitigation measures are within the EIR that was certified by the planning commission, and all impacts were lower to a level below significance. And finally, issue number seven was dealing with, the appellant cites cumulative impacts, but yet they get into loss of open space, failure of the city to implement the Climate Action Plan, views of the project at build-out, and site development to restrict to single-family homes. I've previously discussed all those areas, and I've cited the areas within the EIR where those analysis and mitigation measures have been applied to lower the significance of the proposed subdivision. With that, staff believes that the ultimate design of the subdivision has been fully addressed within the EIR. The analysis I provided for is very in-depth, and based on the appeal regarding the issue does not identify any required findings that an adverse impact on public health or safety will result. That's what needs to be made, those findings, should you want to overturn the planning commission's action, and that is consistent with density bonus and state law. With that, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution upholding the planning commission's certification of the EIR and approving the project. I make myself available for any questions, and we have the applicant and a presentation available as well.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft? Would you like to come forward?
Can I? Do you want to set it up?
Is it just going to be you, or is Mark Puckett also going to be?
This is Mark Puckett, ma'am. He's going to be heading up the, he's arranged a presentation for the council. I'm going to open for them, for their group, and in just a moment, once they get set up and everything.
Sure, no, take your time.
Mayor, City Council, distinguished guests, thank you for entertaining our thoughts this evening and hearing our issues. You know, I'm a veteran. I served in Operation Enduring Freedom. I was an infantry Marine. I have fought tooth, blood, and nail for this country, and the ideas that I fought for are democracy and having a say-so in our, the governance of the communities that we live in. And to be honest, after the planning commission's hearing, I can't say I walked away from that feeling wholeheartedly, like the stuff that I did in Afghanistan really mattered. When I was told that it didn't matter what I did or what we did, that this plan would go through. And it's on record, you can re-watch the video if you like. The fact that it was said by the city that this was done to pencil in, to pencil out the plan says to me that we're just doing this because it's an unfinished plan. There was not, there wasn't much time and effort given to, well, excuse me, there was a lot of time and effort and money spent on this thing. The EIR is quite comprehensive, but it lacks a serious issue. The developers pay the people who develop the EIR. They're paid people by the developers, so they have a self-interest in telling them what they want. In fact, there was an article written by, one moment here, by Camille Von Canell in NSource News, who says, "In February, the San Diego City County Board of Supervisors adopted a new policy that the county leaders say that will limit new development in rural high-risk fire areas. In three recent cases, judges have ruled that local officials failed to fully analyze the wildfire risk of large-scale housing developments resulting in those projects being blocked. Those projects are Harmony Grove, Village South, Fontana Ranch, and Otay Village 14." California Attorney General Rob Bonta said, and I quote, "As these mega disasters become the norm, it is more critical than ever that we build responsibly." I can't say that this is being done effectively with the Concordia development. There are so many flaws and issues with the general plan and the climate action plan. If I can point them out, as a veteran and only a veteran, what do educated people say about this, who have no involvement with the developers? He continues to say, "Local governments have a responsibility to address wildfire risk associated with the developed projects at the front end. Doing so will save dollars and lives down the line." The blocked projects grew criticism in part because they require exemptions from the general plan, which governs the safe development in the county. And on that note, I'm going to turn it over to one of our associates, Peggy, who's going to start off the presentation. Peggy?
You can do it. Yeah, please. Hello, good evening. My name is Peggy Riley, and I live at 721 Los Arbolitos Boulevard, adjacent to the parcel for the last 33 years. And as you can see, this is what we have right now up on the screen. We are not against any development, just the wrong type of development. We have invested much more than the developer in keeping our neighborhood livable. The last block of Los Arbolitos was held up for two years until the developer came back with one-story houses to fit our neighborhood. Even Ocean Camp appears to be respecting the hard preserve. Okay, this is what I bought when I bought it. If you look at the picture on the screen, you can see me in the center of the picture walking along what was then the river. I'm a tiny little person right in the middle of the screen down there. We know there must be progress. Palo was a dead end dirt road at Cocoa Palms and Fusat. School was a tomato field. But does this progress have to ignore the 22 years of residential activism, as well as our historical input to the city about our neighborhood? This is the exact spot the trail is lost. Planning says cutting off the trail shouldn't affect the bike trail at all with this development. Are the people and dogs that use the trails going to move to the bike path trail? Was there any analysis done on this? Note the upper right corner of the picture, the trail was there 20 years ago, as you can see in the right top corner. Okay, enough about me. Planning Commission questioning revealed errors, omissions, and surprises on March 14th, and this is my summary. Richard was saying the trails were closed, now he's saying they're open. Which one is it? They decide at the last minute to add two more stop signs, and they left out the 30-day rental clause. It seems like they're rushing this project. Surprises that they're going to cut the trail in half, but it won't have any effect on the bicycle trail traffic. And then the two-story change reasonings years ago during COVID to make it pencil. Isn't the city looking out for us residents and property owners? But we don't have to be picky, there's way too much to choose from. Let's move along to land use. As designed, this project is all wrong. High-density housing in the WCPZ, the furthest away from major thoroughfares, cuts into open space and cuts into stock of trails. In a neighborhood of one-story houses, Concordia proposes to build high-density two-story houses on a pad raised seven feet at least above our properties, which is, makes this almost a three-story home. Respect for the hard preserve and our already existing investments in Oceanside is at a minimum in this proposal. It will destroy the unique positive attributes of our neighborhood that we worked so hard with the city to keep. We want this historically longstanding issue put to rest and not in this way. Make the San Luis Rey River work for the city and not against it. Challenge developers to integrate the community with the area and not wall it off. Approving this development as presented will cause property values to sink and will also cause lawsuits as necessary. And that's just the land use. Moving on to public safety. We look at four areas, public safety, aviation, fire, and personal safety, and sewers. So I'm going with that and introduce Tracy Collins.
Hi, my name's Tracy Collins, and I'm here to bring to your attention some of the substandard plumbing practices that are being used in this project, even according to some of your city engineers, most of them that have listed these papers behind you, and I have another copy here if you'd like to see. They're not following standard plumbing practices. They've almost got a flat-line sewer pipe because they can't go around the sewer that's already been there for the last 40 years. This has been tried before. About every 10 years, they realize they can't get through the sewer lines that are there. So in this plan, they've now decided to almost flat-line it to less than, to about a 16th of an inch. Imagine your plumber coming in and telling you, your main line has got a flat spot in it? You got to dig it up and replace it all the time until you get it done correctly. I'm wondering why the city is allowing them to do this. It brings the high likelihood of failures to the plumbing system. I would like to know about, since City of Oceanside is allowing two ADUs per household now, this eight-inch sewer line is in no way close to in size or in fall to be able to accommodate these ADUs that will be, you're planning for the future here. So you plan for the future for these homeowners that are going to spend upwards of a half a million plus per house? And I don't know, will they just not be able to allow to put in ADUs behind their house? That's not fair to them and should be then disclosed in their paperwork as such. Because of the substandard plumbing practices, again, your engineers have reiterated time and time again about them, they're coming too close to some of the sewer pipes that have been arbitrarily now allowed. They're supposed to be 12 inches from a mainline sewer pipe in the city streets. They are in the city streets, they're trying to get permission to be within six inches. Have you ever dug in sand, compacted all down, and the expense and the problems the cities will have from when they have to do the repairs to these sewer lines eventually, along with all these other lines now crossing way too close to be able to have access to all these sewers? You're right next to the San Luis Rey River. If these sewer lanes fail, or when they fail, they will not only be going into our drinking water within a mile of the pumps, pumping station for our drinking water, but it will also go into the San Luis Rey River. If it goes to the San Luis Rey River, we're going to have a very expensive problem from the state for polluting raw sewage all the way across the board. We'll be drinking it, and we'll be swimming in it at the beaches. I'd like to discuss some of the proposed, again, you have the entire list of all of the infractions that they're trying to create, not being able to cover the piping with adequate dirt and soil to keep it safe from big trucks, trash trucks, heavy street sweepers and such. There's a reason why we have these death limitations. It's for trash trucks can drive over them and not push them down. When you've got a 16th of an inch per foot fall in a construction site this large, one little pebble will make a flat spot in your sewer. When you have a flat spot in your sewer, you will have clogs. When you have clogs, it will be flowing out onto the streets. They've also talked about our street manholes are lower, so that now means all that sewage, which doesn't get down to our waterway or the river, will then also be flooding into our streets through the manholes that are too low, according to all of their technical stuff going on here. So again, there are so many problems with your drainage and your water systems here. Water, we can pipe around things, we can do things. Sometimes it's not as critical. I think if any of you homeowners know, if your sewer is not dropping at a rate, a rate of fall that's adequate for all these units and the ADUs that will be put in, people are buying houses, a lot of them are builders, just so they can add another unit into the garage or into the backyard. And there is no way this eight-inch sewer line, being within about a 16th of an inch, fall will handle such a load. For these reasons, the safety reasons behind them, I would request that you deny this project. Do not allow these problems to come up. We've had other councils before. We've been through this before, a couple times. The problem was the sewer. They could not do it safely without the big problems that, the risk factor that now the city will be taking on if and when there is a problem. I also noticed there's no natural gas in any of these houses, which is going to be very expensive for the people that own it. That's okay, I realize we want to get away from CO2 emissions. I would request they have at least 15 to 20 solar panels on each house so that they can offset some of the electricity. We're in the biggest brownout area of Oceanside in that area because we don't have enough electricity. They're building 54 houses now that are all electricity. They will probably have ACs, I would assume, and somebody needs, they need to offset this electric use by putting in these solar, I have 30 solar panels on my house, I'm doing my share. I would expect my neighbors behind me and the builders to be the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could you hold on?
Hi, I'm Mark Puckett. I'm also a resident. Yeah, we're lucky we didn't have a flood this afternoon. This is an airplane crash just a couple weeks ago, fatality. This is one in February. This is the report of the last, of one in February. I, you know, this is to give you a little information on what's going on with their flight trajectories. The next picture, I want you to hold on to your stomachs a little bit because we're going to be playing territory. Where this is what the, the most important part is that green arrow at the top. That is actually right over this project, and that is actually typically where people turn base, at Oceanside. There's a, that was an aircraft. Now we're going to talk about personal safety. They want to change, shake off the path with this, this is the way they're going to do it. This is what Cypress Drive looks like now with, built up to the, to the culvert, and this is where they're going to build. Now we've got fire problems, we spoke about those, so let me just skip ahead. That's a nice picture, though. This is a morning after, unfortunately, we see from my walk, I took this picture. Diane is not here tonight. She's hurt her back, and we have instead Paige DeSino, pardon.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm Paige DeSino, representing Preserve Calavera on behalf of Diane Nygaard. We join this appeal.
Oh, sorry. I was going to ask that all phones be silenced, please. I was gonna ask that all phones be silenced, please. It's a 20 minutes runs really quickly, and we really wanna be able to hear everyone that speaks. You do have 4 minutes 35 seconds left. Continue.
How much?
4 minutes 35 seconds.
All right. All right. We join this appeal for two primary reasons. First, failure to address cumulative greenhouse gas emissions, and second, the edge effects on the second-sensitive lands along the San Luis Rey River. We are already seeing the early stages of what will be devastating impacts from climate change if we don't all do a lot more to reduce our GHGs. Drought, wildfires, and health impacts from excessive heat and vector-borne diseases will all increase. Almost half of our local GHGs come from automobiles. Oceanside set the threshold for addressing the impacts from cars so high that most projects, including this one, are exempt from even doing any VMT analysis. Exempting projects like this assumes that all those cumulative impacts will be addressed by the Climate Action Plan. But Oceanside is years behind in implementing its cap. So in fact, there is no real mitigation for all these emissions. Delays in implementing our cap will only mean that our options for actually reducing GHGs will be much more difficult and costly. We urge you to stop exempting so many projects and make climate change action a real priority. San Diego County has already lost over 95% of its historic wetlands. That makes the wetlands that remain, like San Luis Rey River, that much more precious. But we keep seeing further damage to these remaining wetlands. We call it death by a thousand small cuts. I'm sure many of you remember a few years ago when there were many arson fires along the river, fueled by invasive plants like arundo and pampas grass. That's why your fire department proposed, and this council passed, an ordinance restricting planting of those plants in this city. This is one example of why adding specific conditions to CCNRs for projects like this are so important. The Regional Conservation Plan details specific edge effects that need to be addressed in areas next to preserves. Things like lighting, invasive plants, access restrictions, and control of trash and predators. Other projects in Oceanside have required CCNRs to address these edge effects. We ask for that with this project, and thank you to Concordia for now agreeing, agreeing to include those conditions. We ask you tonight to add that as a condition of approval for this project, requiring the CCNRs to address edge effect conditions so that this project is not just one more of those thousand cuts damaging our priceless wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that a stop?
Yes.
It's a stop? That leaves 1:52. Wait, wait, hold on. You only have 1 minute 52 seconds left. Do you wanna use that right now, or do you wanna hold off for a rebuttal? Just wanna ask you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, alternative analysis. This is a big picture, this is a little picture, this is, the neighborhood exists. It's hard to imagine the density that they're asking for. The trails that are here are already marked on the map, and if we look at a bigger trail, we're gonna see how big a river this is in our city. It compares very favorably to the harbor. And this is a bigger, they thought of a San Diego, thought of a I-5 to I-15 San Luis Rey River parking. Where were we? This is five, 10 years ago.
One minute left.
The question is, high density in the WCPZ, CPZ, a neighborhood of one-story houses, propose a high-density? Just what's going on? I mean, one of the reasons that I moved here is because I liked the city, and I've been around. But you guys are making a decision here that is really gonna put me in a difficult position. I'd love to retire here, but I'm not sure if you're gonna put tenements like this in my neighborhood. I'm, yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna affect property value. And I think there's a general decision that's not here. There's no policy on the fourth, on the north parcel, for example. That's another question we have. But we are out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I press?
Excuse me, let me just say one more thing. Other people, the public, public members will be able to speak, not the ones who just spoke, but other members from the public will be able to speak whether or not you submitted a slip for up to three minutes, depending on how many there are. We had 20, it would be reduced to two, but it doesn't seem like we have that many. So at this time, I wanna go ahead and recognize the applicant. Applicant has up to 20 minutes to do a presentation if requested, and you are requesting.
Yes, it will not be 20 minutes, so I promise. All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Arlene Tendick. I am the Community Outreach Liaison for Concordia Homes, here to talk to you about Cypress Point. Community engagement was a huge part of our process. Members of the community had a variety of ways to share their feedback with us, including four public meetings and various individual and small group meetings that we went to people's homes for. We also established an informational website where people could email us and ask questions. We did our best to incorporate as much of their feedback as we could, and this is a summary of what we heard throughout our process. The big issues from neighbors, especially those living adjacent to the project site, were security and privacy, transient activity, we heard about inconsiderate pet owners, not cleaning up after themselves, not being respectful of the folks who lived right adjacent to there. We also heard a lot about illegal RV parking and off-roading. That concern was also reiterated when we talked to the community representative from the Sheriff's Department. There were some concerns, as noted, about hydrology and biology. Those were addressed through SEQA, but these individual and very specific neighbor concerns were things that we took really seriously and worked to incorporate changes where we could. The first thing that we did was opt to make Cypress Point a gated community. Initially, we had proposed a non-gated community and included a landscaped pedestrian trail, as you can see here. That would have provided access to the open space to the north, as well as access to the small park within the project itself. These two items were intended to be community benefits, but we were told often that that was not seen as a benefit, so we chose to remove them in favor of more parking. Residents shared with us that there were existing parking challenges on Los Arbolitos, and so in removing the landscaped trail, we were able to add eight additional parking spaces for guests. The gate, as noted here in the, by the blue circle, will actually allow pedestrian traffic to funnel down the extension of Paula Road and go along the western boundary of the project site. This route has two narrower pinch points, as you can see here with these orange circles, so that will also effectively reduce the off-roading issues that we talked about, but still allow people to have access to that northern, northern open space, which is owned by the city. We also opted to make Aspen Street for emergency vehicles only. Residents who live at the corner of Los Arbolitos and Aspen shared with us that they had concerns about people, headlights going into their homes from people exiting the community, as well as the parking, which I already mentioned. So we talked with Oceanside Fire and confirmed that we could make that EVA only. Even though that access point is not going to be used for day-to-day traffic, we'll still be installing new trees along Aspen Street for the community's benefit. And lastly, a new six-foot-tall fence is going to be added along the eastern property line. We'll also be planting screening hedges to address the privacy concerns. We know that we can't make everybody happy, but these changes were direct results of the conversations that we had with the community. We have heard some confusion throughout our conversations of what's actually allowed on the site. As Richard shared, it's a seven-acre vacant parcel at the end of Paula and Los Arbolitos. It's surrounded by housing, San Luis Rey bike path, and 13 acres of open space to the north. There, the full 20 acres was part of a past redevelopment proposal, so people referenced that often when we were talking to them, and also submitted that in some of their letters to the city. So we thought it was important to clarify that 13 acres to the north is not part of this project, it's still owned by the city and is still zoned open space. The project, as you can see here by the blue line, is not limiting access to the bike path, nor are the informal trails that have been forged through the vacant lot part of any formal trail plans by the city. We are zoned residential, which is consistent with our neighbors. Additionally, in addition to consistency with city land use designations, the Los Arbolitos community CCNRs also identify this parcel for future residential development. So this project is intended to really finish, finish this community. This is a view of the project looking west from the existing neighborhood. The two-story design and smaller lot size make it possible for Concordia to maximize the site without sacrificing living space. The square footage and smaller lots are also natural constraints for keeping the price down. Attainability was, was very important to us. It's important to note that Concordia will also be building all the affordable units on-site, along with the rest of the project, instead of paying me and Luffy. And then one point of clarity, we're not raising the pad seven feet, as was mentioned, it's two feet, which is consistent with the rest of the existing community. We paid special attention to neighbor concerns over how the new homes might impact them and designed the project so that the new homes would be as far away from the existing homes as possible. This exhibit shows the section at the north end of the site between 745 Los Arbolitos and the project. It was mentioned in the appeal letter that there were concern over the street widths. As noted in the staff report, which was very thorough, by the way, Richard, the internal roads could have been wider if proposed homes had been placed immediately adjacent to the existing homes. As I mentioned before, we know how important privacy was to the folks who are already living here, so we opted to include that landscape buffer instead. This is another section that shows the south end. Setbacks across the site range from 75 to 180 feet. And this shows the horizontal view of the Paula Road extension. The design of the community in this particular extension adds community character, provides a nice buffer from our neighbors. It also gives additional opportunities for street parking, which was a big theme that we heard. Cypress Point incorporates environmentally-conscious measures designed to respect, protect, and preserve existing natural habitats. Features include enhanced habitat adjoining the open space to the north, several new western sycamore trees, and a six-foot masonry wall at the northwest corner of the project to minimize noise and light impacts. In further commitment to minimizing light impacts, there will be no streetlights in the project, and proposed light fixtures on the houses will be directed downward and shielded to avoid light spill. Finally, the plant palette and irrigation have been designed to limit the spread of invasive plant species into the adjacent open space. Recently, members of the team met with Diane Nygaard of Preserve Calavera to review these features. Concordia has agreed to include the details in the, in the CCNRs for Cypress Point in order to memorialize our commitments to Preserve Calavera. We believe the solutions mitigate the small encroachment into the hardline preserve and result in no significant impacts. In conclusion, we wanna thank city staff and our neighbors for their collaboration. We believe our efforts resulted in a project that honors the surrounding community character and recognizes change in community, environmental, and economic needs. Cypress Point aligns with city goals by providing workforce housing, including 15% on-site affordable housing, which complies with the site's existing residential zoning and satisfies Surplus Lands Act and State Density Bonus requirements. The project avoids impacts to our neighbors and the environment through generous setbacks and landscape buffers, and project features which limit light and noise impacts on the adjacent habitat. We respectfully ask that you uphold Planning Commission certification of the EIR for Cypress Point. Members of our team are here to answer any questions you might have, including any clarification on the sewer issues, and we just thank you for your time.
Thank you. I did have a quick question for clarification. You indicated you had a conversation with Preserve Calavera and that Concordia has agreed to address in the CCNR's edge effect conditions, is that correct?
Correct.
So that's already in the project?
Yes, we agreed to that.
Those words, that language is in, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Honorable Mayor Sanchez, we do have a copy of the email exchanged between Preserve Calavera and the applicant, and we will make sure that this gets read into the record, handed to the city clerk for inclusion in any conditions of approval that might be amended.
So, I'm sorry, it's in already, right? So we don't, the council doesn't have to do anything about it?
Mayor, may I?
Yes, thank you.
I would recommend that Mr. Greenbauer, because I think, my understanding is that this is a commitment by the developer that's above and beyond the city conditions of approval, and so we need to put that into the record. And so CCNRs are reviewed by my office at the appropriate time, and so we'll need to make sure that those commitments are contained within the CCNRs.
So he needs to read that in the record?
I think he could just put it into the record with the city clerk.
Okay, so, can you do that now? Just wanna make sure it happens. Okay. Next is the public comment. So how many people have submitted, and let the record reflect that the...
I have received...
Identified memo or email exchange has been handed over to the city clerk.
And will be entered into the record.
Thank you very much. Now, this is the public comment part of the proceedings. Do we have any people who have signed up to speak?
First we do. We have five members of the public that have registered to speak on this item. And we have two podiums, so as I call your name, please make your way down to either podium. Our first speaker is Eric Brufold, to be followed by Paige DeSino, to be followed by Kami Mattson.
Thank you, and while he's getting geared up to speak, there are five people being called, but after that, I will ask if others wish to speak. This is a public hearing, you do not have to have submitted a slip. I will invite you as well to come, to come forward.
Mayor Sanchez and members of the council, first, tremendous apologies for my phone going off there about an hour ago.
Oh, that was you.
It was me, and I thought I knew how to silence it, and I failed miserably.
Could you start up his time again, my apologies? I should not be making any comments.
Nope, nope, I was actually about an hour ago, but anyway. But be that as it may, my name's Eric Brufold, I'm the CEO of the San Diego North Economic Development Council, and I don't really need to remind anybody on the council that the number one, two, and three challenge that businesses in Oceanside and throughout North County face is recruiting and retaining talent. With median home prices now, and I did the calculations yesterday, I couldn't believe it, with median home prices right now on the I-78 corridor over $1 million, it is critically important that we increase supply. And the reason is, is that if we look back in 2013 to 2020, we added over 39,000 jobs along the I-78 corridor. It's been a good economy for this region, but we only added among the five cities only 9,000 housing units. And so we've had 4.2 net new jobs chase every new housing unit. And you don't need to be an economist to understand that that imbalance between supply and demand that's been added has driven up home prices, and most importantly, it's been our workers that are making middle wage wages, our firefighters, our police officers, our folks in manufacturing that are mid-level employees that have been dislocated from the 78 corridor and forced to drive 20, 30 miles away, living in Southern Riverside County or other places. This project does just a little bit, and I will be here at any council I can to remind you and the other councils along the 78 corridor that the number-one thing that we can do to support this economy is build more housing to deal with that imbalance and try and add the supply that we need. So thank you very much for your time today. I know it's gonna be a long night, or maybe not a long night, but best of luck, and again, that's why we support this project.
Thank you. Paige DeSino.
Mayor, I think she was part of the speakers that was here.
Okay, so, okay. I understand she spoke on behalf of Diane Nygaard, who was out.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Next is Kami Mattson.
Mayor Sanchez and members of the council, my name is Kami Mattson. I own two homes in Oceanside, a few miles from this project. I have watched Oceanside change a lot over the last 35 years, and I'm excited about the investment and improvements that are happening here. Oceanside has done so much to enhance essential infrastructure upgrades that support resilience, improve affordability, and strengthen overall sustainability. Housing is desperately needed throughout San Diego County. I believe everyone needs strongly, everyone should have a safe and affordable and clean place to live. I also empathize with residents who are worried about what new development means to them and their neighborhood. I have asked many questions about this project. What I like is that it follows Oceanside's general plan. There's been a lot of care and design to an attractive, well-planned neighborhood and communication with nearby residents. I believe that this project is created with integrity and with overall, with the overall Oceanside community in mind. This land is zoned for houses, and this project is right for the site. I hope you vote yes tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Mattson.
Tyler Martin, just for the record, but
Oh, sorry, Martin. It was on the bottom. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Thank you, staff, for working so hard to get to today. I'm 33 years old, and I'm trying to buy a house. And Oceanside is a place that I would like to settle down, raise a family, have a shot at the American dream. And I went to college and got the degree and got the job and feel like I've done a lot right. And I know that there's a lot of opposition largely from neighboring community here. This developer has done everything they can to work with the community. They have taken real detriment to their project by moving it off of their lot lines, by installing the landscaping screening that we saw, and they did what they could. But when we're in a housing crisis, we have to add units to the market. We have to add supply to the market. What you're here to vote on today is 54 opportunities for young families to call Oceanside home. That's what this is. And you can drive through this neighborhood when it's built, and you can see kids playing in the yard and know that you made the risky decision, maybe sometimes it's not politically favorable decision, but the tough decision to call to the greater good. 30, 40, 50 offers per home? How can you compete? And so it's moved to Texas, I guess. And yeah, they love it. But here's the thing, this ground was always planned for development. And if you want proof of that, there's an existing egress and ingress and egress in the existing development. So why would that developer have put access to this property into the homes that they live in? They did it for future expansion. That's why that's there, and that's on all the maps in front of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Zamir Karim.
Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Keem, distinguished members of the council, my fellow community and colleagues, my name is Zamir Karim. I'm a doctor of jurisprudence candidate at California Western School of Law, and I've been a resident of Oceanside, directly catty-cornered to this project for the last 13 years. I'd like to bring your attention to the Cypress Point Development Project's Appendix K, the sewer system analysis. Gravity sewer system designs are specifically calculated using the minimum slope and pipe diameter to ensure adequate flow rates to prevent manhole surcharging and sewer system pressurization. Private sewer systems usually have their own leaching fields and septic tanks. There's nothing private about this sewer system, other than who is installing it, because the proposed sewer lines connect to existing public lines. Putting excess pressure from improperly designed new lines onto old existing public sewer infrastructure is a recipe for disaster. The Manning equation or formula, also known as the Gawcler-Manning formula, is an empirical formula for open channel flow or free surface driven by gravity. It was first presented by Philip Gawcler in 1867 and redeveloped by Robert Manning in 1890 to determine the minimum and maximum sewer line sizes and slopes to prevent black flows. Using the Manning formula, according to Cypress Point's own analysis, the number of houses built would need to be reduced by 30% to be in compliance with existing grading plans. The current minimum velocity of the sewer line proposed is .44 feet per second. Two feet per second is the minimum velocity to be in compliance with building codes for public sewer systems. Less than a quarter of the required minimum flow is being proposed here, which is going to cause major problems for the rest of the residents in the community. In addition, where two feet per second is not plausible, a minimum slope of 1.6% is permissible. In sections where velocities are greater than two feet per section, a minimum slope of .5% is permissible. Here, .35% minimum slope is all this there, below the minimum for even flat areas. In addition, the city council thinks that they can rubber stamp over basic principles of physics and engineering that have been widely accepted by engineers and physicists for the last century and a half. Other developers have realized that this parcel would cost more to raise the grading level to achieve the minimum 1.6% slope than the profit receives from developing into single-family houses would provide. That's probably why this lot has been undeveloped since 1938, according to Cypress Point's own environmental impact report analysis.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
This is a time for public hearing, for the public to speak. If you wish to speak on this item, please rise and approach the podium, give your, provide your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Sir.
Oh, my gosh. Mayor Sanchez, council members, everyone, my name is Rodney White. You may know me from other meetings. I live in a nearby neighborhood called Rancho San Luis Rey, a popular topic in many recent city meetings. Anyway, my home's four feet off the ground, four feet in a senior community because of this thing called the ranch, the San Luis Rey riverbed or something. There's like maybe some 100-year flood or something like that. So I'm four feet off the ground. So I'm just kind of, kind of ramble a little bit, but I don't know if anybody watched the recent news clips about a house that fell in the river, you know, like some flash flood, you know, up north here somewhere a little while ago? I don't know. But although I applaud the efforts of the young people that want to buy houses, if I had $1 million or $600,000, $700,000, $800,000, I don't know as though I would invest it right next to a river. A river. Really? There's a reason why they call it rivers. So I don't know. Just food for thought. Think about that. I know it's rhetorical, but why would you build a house right next to a river? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Good evening, city council. I'm Katie Taylor, live in Fire Mountain. And first, I want to say I agree with everything this team has spoken about, and sir, I want to thank you for your service to our country. I'm as upset as anyone, anyone in this room with a building being approved that is not consistent with our neighborhoods and quality of life. The problem does not rest with this city council or the Planning Commission of Oceanside. Zoning has been taken over by Sacramento. Gavin Newsom and the Democrat majority in Sacramento, who have chipped away at the ability of any California city to control their building. I wish our cities had banded together and sued Sacramento. But facing a state government with unlimited funds to fight, the financial impact to the city's budgets for litigation, I can understand why it was easier to keep, just decide, keep Sacramento off our back and meet the mandates and guidelines. Everybody in this room, there is no such thing as R1 zoning anymore. It is gone. So what I'd like to recommend the city to think about, this is going to come up time and time again. I recommend you have a special meeting, have the Planning Commission here, and explain to the city residents what the city can approve only and what Sacramento mandates. How many times did this approval say, "State mandated, state mandated"? It is not the city's fault. It's not the Planning Commission's fault. And I'd like to read off Gavin Newsom's phone number, 916-445-2841. I suggest everybody call tomorrow.
Thank you. Ma'am, speak, state your name, spell your last name, and you have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jackie Hill, H-I-L-L. I live at the corner of Aspen and Los Arbelitos, and recently planted a garden. Well, lo and behold, we have bumblebees. And I looked up this special bumblebee, and it is on the endangered list because, you know, bumblebees are now fish. So I have a problem with that because bumblebees only, this bumblebee's, my name is Crotch. Crotch has discovered this bumblebee. And this bumblebee lives in dry, dusty areas, and that's exactly what's behind the house. And they only travel up to a mile, one mile. And dry, dusty, that's what's behind my house, dry dust. So my problem is, okay, we have endangered bumblebees that are living on this ground. Are you all going to build there and destroy this bumblebee? And as much as we want to pollinate and save the monarch, I was here for your opening presentation. Beautiful. This bumblebee came to my garden. I got pictures of him and where the backyard is. And I only live from here to here. I mean, there's my backyard. Here's my fence. There's the, you know, there's this area. And it was also my neighbor's tree. So it's not just indigenous to my yard, but to the yards around us. So how can you build where there's an endangered species? I just have, I have pictures if anybody would like to see this bumblebee. And that's all I have to say. Think about that and your monarchs, because this field is just full, and I see monarchs all the time back there. And there, there's a bunch of those flowers that you talked about back there. Monarchs are everywhere. Let's practice what we preach, okay?
Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Owen. Last name is Owen, O-W-E-N. I've lived in the valley since 1971. My main concern, when he talked about the sewer, I've lived along that river, not too far from it, and I've watched that thing over flood when we've had some severe floods. It's very important that we don't have sewer running into our rivers or into our streets. We still have some areas that we still have floods, and that has not been taken care of. I know, I dealt with it. But my main concern, too, at certain times of the day, you go along 78, I mean, 76 out here, I'm sorry, and it's backed up in traffic. You would talk about pollution. You got traffic going, stop and go, and then you want to add more homes out there, and you're not widening our roads or anything like that. Doesn't matter where you go in this area. I-5 hasn't been widened since 1971. Oh, wow, we're going to put a diamond lane in. That's going to help a whole lot. It's not. I can't remember the last time 78 was widened. We don't have that many access roads in and out of this road, but we keep adding homes, and we keep having stop and go traffic. As bad as we do with all the other problems that we have, but then nothing's been in phase when we do new development. We just put more traffic in, we add more problems, and nothing's ever solved here. And I've been in this town since 1971, and I've seen it over and over again. And you get a bad season when we have a lot of rain. I remember a time when I was taking a city bus out to, out into Camp Pendleton, and we had to tell guys that we couldn't get into certain bases. We couldn't even go around the base. I remember when we lost the road to Douglas Bridge, and I was going out North River Road to 76, to 76, and had to go all the way down to 78 to come up El Camino Real to get North River Road, to get to transit buses where I was working at. It happens. We've done a lot to improve that river, but if you're going to start adding problems to it, we get a bad year, like we've had some in the past. Thank goodness, we don't get them very often, but we can still have some problems. But if you're going to add more homes on the river, and like, I'm going to agree with him, sewer is going to be the biggest problem, and I've seen that happen here, too.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name.
Sure. My name is David Palmetier. I live in Oceanside. I didn't come tonight prepared to speak. I thank you very much for the opportunity to do so. I'm a neighbor. I live probably approximately a mile away from this proposed project. I sometimes walk down into this area. I was a park and recreation commissioner in another city for a while, and also president of
Faux Park.
Friends of Oceanside Parks. I'd love to have seen this develop into a park. I feel that the city of Oceanside is underutilized as far, or supported as far as parks are concerned. I do feel for the neighbors. I think that this project is incongruous with the single-family homes in that area that have been there for many years, and many of the residents have lived there for many years. I did attend one of the meetings that they held, and I asked, why don't you, I asked the developer, why don't you build homes that are similar to the existing homes? And he said it wouldn't pencil out. In other words, it's money that they were concerned about more than the quality of life of the people that are living there. I would like to think that the city council would take that quality of life into consideration and ask the developer to go back and rethink the development that they have. 56 homes in this area, very small lots. I heard someone say about children playing on, in the yards. I think that the homes are going to be built on approximately 3,000 square foot lots. They're not going to be very much in the way of yards for these children to play on. I would really recommend that if a development takes place there, that it be more congruous with the homes that are in that area. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Frank Kubeta. I live at Rancho San Luis Rey. When I moved here four years ago, I was really quite happy to see an area where I could run that was dirt and not next to cars. That was the biggest thing, is that I wasn't having to run with a vehicle 10 to 20 feet away from me. It's an ideal place, this, the land that they want to build these homes on. It's beautifully open. In the springtime, it's covered with flowers, butterflies, and bumblebees. It is a wonderful place for a park. I see people out there with their dogs off-leash. It is a wonderful place, and I know that Oceanside has been looking for land to put a dog park on. This is that land. I mean, everybody is over there enjoying it. There are paths, the kids are riding their dirt bikes on, they build ramps. It's a joyful place. We don't need more houses. And one thing with houses, where are you going to get the water for these places if we already are living in a 20, almost 25-year drought? And it's like, okay, I know the residential people are already, residents are already subjected to ruling about how long they can water their lawns and how frequently. I know that 80% of the water in the state goes to agriculture. Yes, we need to eat. The rest of the country needs to eat. I think that's all wonderful. But on the other hand, building more houses isn't the answer to water, for water shortage. It isn't going to bring anything but more grief to the current people who live here. The young lady you spoke earlier referred to us as our neighbor. Where do you live, and where are you people going to be living? You don't going to, you're not going to live where we're going to be living, dealing with the traffic on Los Arbelitos and Paula. I already, I tried to make a left-hand turn into our mobile home park, and I have to sit there for two lights because the traffic, traffic is almost backed up all the way to Mission on El Camino Real. It's ridiculous to think that we need more of anything, the congestion of homes, the usage of the water. There's no need for it. What we need is open space where people can enjoy the life they have. The people who live in the neighborhoods at Paula and Los Arbelitos deserve something nicer than homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. And there's no time left for rebuttal. I don't know, Mr. Greenbauer, do you have anything to respond to, respect to any comments by the public?
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, the seven points of appeal that have been brought forward, I know some areas in the public discussion went beyond that, but I have nothing else to bring forward based on the seven points of appeal for you to consider.
Thank you. Back to the council. Anyone wishing to speak? Or is my light, it's not working? Anyone wishing to speak, or is my light, it's not working? Councilmember Rodriguez.
I just have some questions. First and foremost, I want to thank the public for coming out and putting that appeal. I know this is your backyard, this is your home, this is, you know, your neighbor's, and this has been a vacant lot for a long time. However, it is private property that you've been enjoying. It's owned by a private owner, and we have to keep that in mind, that, you know, we respect private property rights and the ability of private property owners to apply and spend the money to go through the entitlement pathway, subject to a public process. The two questions I have that I would like clarification on have to do with, just for a response to the public with respect to the sewer. I know this is a, a condition of approval that'll have to be inspected and permitted and go through the whole nine yards before they can ever start building. But if, if staff can just briefly address that, then my second question is, there was some confusion on a trail, it wasn't a public trail, it looked like it crossed the private property that was being used by the public, and for some reason, they think it's gonna be terminated or it's gonna extend, and I want to confirm it's not affecting the public bike path in any way, shape, or form.
Councilmember Rodriguez, real quick, to, for the sewer aspect, this has been fully vetted by our Water Utilities Department, and they have signed off on it. I know it's not one of the points of appeal for your consideration, but I did want to make that clear, that it has been fully vetted by our professionals in the Water Utilities Department. Going to the pedestrian access to the bike path itself, nothing is being restricted. There were some pseudo-paths put in place just from over years of people walking through the site, but no active entrance or passageways are being blocked by this, and the bike path will remain as the same that it is today. I have no further questions.
Deputy Mayor Kyne.
Just a couple of quick questions for staff, so I get a better idea of the area, just from, from some of the concerns I've heard. What's the, the density units per acre for this proposed development?
Honorable Deputy Mayor Kyne, the, for this particular site, the zoning allows 5.9 dwelling units per acre. With density bonus, they have 7.3 dwelling units per acre.
So, were they initially, because this, I'm trying, so initially, they were gonna build within their, within the proposed zoning, correct? But they had to, um, use, they use a surplus land act, so they had to use that, and they had to add those extra affordable homes, is that correct?
They opted to bring the affordability within the project itself.
They, because the land had been declared surplus, there was a determination made, particularly after a court of appeal decision involving, I believe, the city of San Jose, that the, the 15% requirement applied to this project. So, there was a requirement to set aside 15% of the project site as affordable.
So, I, there's also, when you go down Paula or Los Arbolitos, I'm sorry, Los Arbolitos to the south and Frederick, are there multifamily, high-density developments right there?
In the perimeter of the subject site, there are some high-density residential as well as medium-density type residential developments throughout.
Any idea what those densities might be?
I believe we have probably up to 28.9 dwelling units per acre in some of the higher-density areas.
Okay, so this is not just a single-family only in that area, correct?
It, as you extend out and southward of this site, it does get into multifamily and high-density residential.
Okay. And I, I have concerns I'm gonna address in the, at our next public hearing, when we, when the state ties our hands and mandates us to approve density bonus projects that drastically changes the character of single-family neighborhoods. We don't have to have that in this city. However, I think this one is different, where initially, the developer was gonna comply with the zoning that had been designated by the general plan. With the surplus land act, they had to add some more, but with the way this project is, I think it's appropriate for the area. I understand the frustration with it. But it does, the area is, is a mix of multifamily and single-family, and it does fit in that area. I'd make appeal, or I'd make a motion to deny the appeal and approve the project.
Councilmember Weiss.
Yeah, excuse me, excuse me. You're not on the mic, so it's not on the record, and the public speaking input has been closed, so we now are at the council.
So, I, I agree with Deputy Mayor Kyne in regards to what the state is imposing on local governments across the state in regards to not just density bonus projects, but there are a number of other bills that have been approved that are essentially, one of the speakers said, getting rid of single-family zoning throughout the state, which is what you're seeing. My concern with density bonus projects is, you know, we keep being advised that we have little discretion. They're pretty much mandated to be approved in most cases with some minor exceptions. And honestly, I would prefer at some point that, with these density bonus projects, that we have, we give staff direction to find a way to avoid the public hearings with them, because it makes no sense to continue to frustrate the public and the council on projects where there's no discretion. So, I don't know if, if we have the ability to do that, if there is a way to make that happen. I noticed that, you know, with, with all the density bonus requirements and all of the incentives and concessions that we have to approve, that there should be a way to approve them at a, without having a full public hearing. So, after we've, and I'm gonna second the motion, but after we vote on this, I would like the opportunity to make a motion for the council, the direct staff to come back with some process to look, at least look at that as an option. So, I'll second the motion.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes, I, I do have a question. If we were to deny this or vote against it, would that open us up to a lawsuit?
Well, if you, I mean, we've referred to our limited discretion, and I, I know you've heard this from me before, so, under the Housing Accountability Act and other density bonus laws, if you move to deny a project or reduce the project's density when it otherwise complies with the zoning and the general plan and all the objective requirements that apply, then you have to find that there's a specific adverse impact. And we've talked in the past about what that means, but it, it really relates to a quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based upon written public health and safety standards. So, if you were to deny it, you would have to give us that direction about what specific, objective, written, public health or safety standard that you've identified, and in the absence of that, then you could be exposed to litigation, sure.
Okay. And I'd like to just state that the first thing Gavin Newsom did when he became governor was sue Huntington Beach for not building. And he said that NIMBYs, Gavin Newsom tells Southern California NIMBYs to expect new housing in their backyards. And so, he's not afraid to sue anybody. And really, our hands are tied with what Sacramento has done, and Gavin Newsom made it his priority to develop the coastal communities in California. And there's really nothing we can do without subjecting ourselves to litigation.
Okay, there is a motion and a second, and everyone has spoken, so I get to speak now. I am completely in agreement that I am completely against SB 9 and SB 10, which takes away our city's discretion. But I have to say that this project had nothing to do with SB 9 or 10. The same council, except for Councilmember Jensen, voted to sell this land, contrary to the stakeholders requesting that this be a park. This, this land has been owned by the city previously for 50, over 50 years. It was set aside for the flood control project, which is the San Jose Ray project. It was set aside for that over 50 years ago. It's been in the public domain for over 50 years. And the community, and I have heard from you, and I recognize some of you, and, has been using this space as a park, as a dog park, as the, because this community has zero open space, zero. This community has been hit over and over and over again by projects, higher-density projects, yes, schools, two elementary schools, yes, one way in, one way out. There's, you can't get out if, if there's an emergency, you will not be able to get out. So, I did bring this up, that this has been used as a park for over 20 years, certainly during the time I've been on the council, and, you know, as, as people know, I've been here for 22 years. And I brought this up, and I have brought this up over and over again, and previous councils have actually said, okay, the stakeholders want something else. Unfortunately, we never got to the next step of declaring this parkland and really bringing this community what it really needs. We need to have densities, yes, but we also have to have open space. We have to. That is a quality of life that we, that this community deserves. There was nothing to stop us from declaring this a park, nothing. Not SB 9, not SB 10, didn't exist. We had full discretion to do with our land whatever we wanted to do. So, I am, you know, I'm hearing these comments blaming it on, hey, I don't like what Newsom did either, or has done, or is, continues to do with respect to our cities, because I believe in our right to decide what we want to do in the city. So, I am voting no. I am finding in favor of the appellant's. I believe that they have made very critical, credible arguments, especially with respect to the EIR. And I am at a loss for the comments that have been made here, because we all knew, and I brought it up and, you know, whenever I could, that this community has been using this as a park, deserved a park. So, let's go ahead and have a vote. Did you want to speak?
Yes, just a quick question. And those, Madam Mayor, in those 22 years, did you bring an agenda item forward or ever ask or take an, take action to make it a park?
I unfortunately never had a majority, Councilmember Kyne.
Did you try with just two?
I did.
You have had a majority, Mayor.
I did. And unfortunately, I just never
If it was that important to you, you, you had the opportunity, and I just, I find it convenient now to say we could have made it a park.
You know, you can find whatever you want, but this community is who we are supposed to be listening to. This is your district, District 2, and Councilmember Rodriguez, you never heard them either. So, yes, I think everyone knows that I cannot bring an item to the council because I need to have a second, and that is almost impossible. So, I need help here on the dais, guys. Election year is coming up this November. All right, let's vote.
Sanchez, Rodriguez, no.
Okay, item, number 40. Adoption of a resolution upholding Planning Commission Resolution approving tentative map, development plan, and density bonus to allow a 13-lot subdivision, development of eight new single-family homes, and the preservation of four existing single-family homes on a 2.15-acre parcel located at 1728 Whaley Street. The applicant is RREG Investments Series and LLC, and the appellant is Jennifer, Jennifer, how do you say your last name?
Meyer Dirks.
Meyer Dirks?
Meyer.
Meyer Dirks, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open this public hearing, request that council members disclose their contacts with respect to constituents, contacts and correspondence.
Staff and public. Staff and the public.
Staff and public.
Staff, public, and applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
The city clerk's office has received correspondence on this item, and it has been distributed to council prior to the hearing of this item.
Thank you. We begin with a report by Mr. Sergio Madera, city planner.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sergio Madera. I'm the city planner for the city of Oceanside and also the project manager for the Whaley Street residential project. Tonight, the council is being asked to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's unanimous approval of the entitlements for the Whaley Street project, which include a tentative map, a development plan, and a density bonus application. Staff is recommending that the council uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the project by adopting a resolution that has been included as attachment one to the staff report prepared for this item. By way of background, a 2.1-acre project site is located on the northerly side of Whaley Street, between Kurtz and Hunzaker Streets, and is outlined in red on the aerial, aerial depicted on the graphic above. The project site is surrounded by single-family residences in all directions, and is currently developed of five single-family homes, with one home located at the, more or less at the corner of Whaley and Hunzaker, and four homes fronting Kurtz Street. The proposed project would preserve the four existing homes along Kurtz Street, with the existing home at Hunzaker and Whaley being demolished to make, to accommodate eight new additional homes, each that, which would include a junior accessory dwelling unit. Four of the new homes would have direct access to, from driveways off of Hunzaker Street, and that, for the additional new homes, would be accessed from Whaley Street via a private The next several slides depict the development standards of the REB zone and compares them to those being proposed with the project. The notes column include information related to compliance with those standards and whether or not a waiver is being sought through the waiver provisions of density bonus law. As a reminder, density bonus law includes a provision that requires cities to waive a development standard that would physically preclude the development at the density proposed. There are no limits to the number of waivers that can be sought or granted. In this instance, the applicant requires five waivers to accommodate the project. As the table shows, waivers being sought includes a minimum lot size, minimum lot width, some setback standards for existing homes located along Kurtz Street, a waiver on maximum coverage limitation, and a waiver for the lot-to-depth ratio for one of the lots. The balance of the project complies with all the regulations and development standards that are applicable to these homes from the REB zone. The project has been designed with two different floor plans for the new homes, each which would have two different roof styles and four potential color material combinations to provide variety and visual interest. This illustrative depicts a perspective from Hunzaker Street. This is an aerial illustrative that depicts the eight new homes facing west off of Hunzaker and the private drive, and in, in the background, you can see a glimpse of the existing homes at front on Kurtz Street. And finally, this is an illustrative of what the project might look like from Hunzaker Street. You'll note that this is all the same floor plan, but they've been designed with two different roof designs and four different color and material palettes to provide interest and So, as outlined in Article 46 of the zoning ordinance, only the issues raised by the appeal shall be considered by the city council. The next several slides have been outlined, the appeal points contained in the appeal petition received by the city and staff's response to each of the points. The first point the appellant raises is that the project is not in conformance with the general plan. It's that it exceeds the maximum density allowed in the REB district, and that the project and associated junior dwell, accessory dwellings actually result in a density that's closer to 9.3 units per acre. So, our response, the staff's response to that would be that the density bonus inherently means an increase in otherwise maximum allowable density in a given land use category. Government Code Section 65915-F5 clarifies that granting a density bonus shall not in itself require a general plan amendment. And finally, Government Code Section 6585.2 outlines that accessory dwelling units shall not be considered additional density when considering them. The second, a point that the appellant raises is that the project is inconsistent with densities in the immediate vicinity of the project site, and that it wouldn't be allowed under identified general plan policy. So, staff wanted to better analyze, staff analyzed the area within the 1,500-foot notification radius to better understand the density pattern in the immediate vicinity of the project site. The analysis shows that the EBR zone, or designated properties, and they're outlined in green on the aerial above, are developed at a density of approximately 2.75 units per acre, where the single-family detached residential designated properties generally to the west of the project site, and they're highlighted in yellow, are developed at approximately a 5.04 dwelling units per acre. The project is proposed as, proposed at 5.58 units per acre, slightly above what we would expect, and that's what we would expect with the density bonus project, be a little bit would expect, and that's what we would expect with the density bonus project, to be a little above what the existing development patterns are in the immediate vicinity of a project site. The third point that the appellant raises is that the pro forma provided do not, does not adequate evidence to justify the concessions that were approved by the Planning Commission. Just for some background, based on the reservation requirement, the reservation of 10% of the project units were very low-income households, the project is eligible for two incentives or concessions. It is also important to note that in a recent court ruling known as Shiber versus the City of Los Angeles, the Court of Appeal held that the city cannot require an applicant to demonstrate that a concession or incentive is needed to make the project economically feasible. Rather, the city can ask for information to verify the requested incentive or concession would lead to identifiable cost reductions. However, the city, not the appellant, not the applicant, ultimately bears the burden of proof that a concession or incentive would not result in an identifiable or actual cost reduction. The applicant has submitted a pro forma establishing the concessions related to overhead utilities and street frontage improvements, and provides identified cost savings of approximately $1.75 million. It is important to note here that there was an error in the staff report. We only identified a cost savings of $1.3 million. It was just a typographical error. That actually was associated with the land development costs associated with the project. The fourth point the appellant raises is that the project is inconsistent with density bonus law because of how the base density for the project was calculated. Our response is that the project site is unique and that it has a split land use designation. First, the Government Code Section that, within state density bonus law and our local density bonus provisions, outline that all density calculations resulting in fractional units shall be rounded up. As the table on the graphic shows, the resultant maximum potential density of the site is 10 units, and the calculations were done in a manner as prescribed by law. The fifth point that the appellant raises is that the concessions for frontage improvements result in a specific adverse impact. And so Section 901B of the subdivision ordinance outlines that requirements of frontage improvements associated with subdivisions of lands within the City of Oceanside. Further, a specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified, written, public, and health, and safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date of application was deemed complete. The requirements of Section 901B do not represent a public health or safety standard. Rather, they represent a orderly development standard. The sixth point that the appellant raises is the project does not conform with the requirements for a CQ exemption. The Planning Commission granted a Class 32 infill CQ exemption. There are five criteria by which an exemption is evaluated: whether it's consistent with applicable general plan designations and all general plan policies, as well as applicable zoning designations, regulations; where the proposed development occurs within city limits is on a project site of less than five acres; where the project site has no value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species; where the approved project would result in significant effects related to traffic, noise, air quality, and water quality; and where the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. The project does qualify for the said exemption. Technical studies were provided to support all these, to identify that all these criteria have been met, and project qualifies for the CQ exemption. With that, staff does recommend that the council adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's approval for the project. That concludes my presentation. I'd be available for any questions that the council.
Thank you, Mr. Madera. So we do have the appellant here, Ms. Jennifer. You have up to 20 minutes to present. You can reserve.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council.
Just, just hold on. Are you going to, let me, before you get started, I want to be clear. Are you going to be reserving any time for rebuttal?
It remains to be seen at the end of our speech how much time is left.
Okay.
But I do, we did go old school here, so I have exhibits to pass out to you.
Okay, we'll wait till we get those. Are they to pass out or to be seen?
Passed out.
Okay. Okay, hold on, wait, wait till we get this, and then you can start. Okay.
Okay. I have a speaker for myself tonight. I would like to introduce Nicole Meyer-Durks. She'll be.
Make sure I know how this fancy technology works here before we get started. All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Nicole Meyer-Durks. I was born and grew up on Fire Mountain and attended Palmquist Elementary and Lincoln Middle Schools. With each passing year, it gets more dangerous for people walking Fire Mountain streets because of massive traffic increases, including traffic using Fire Mountain as a cut-through from Oceanside Boulevard to the commercial areas along West Vista Way and Highway 78. My generation are accused of being apathetic with regard to politics. We are encouraged to get involved, vote, and make our voices heard. I am an original member of the Residents for the Protection of Fire Mountain. We have tried every way possible to make our voices heard by the city over the past several months. Only one council member has responded and listened to our concerns regarding the Whaley development. Thank you, Councilmember Kime. RPFM is appealing the Planning Commission approval of the proposed Whaley development with a CQ categorical exemption on March 12, 2022. We are appealing that decision because the project does not meet the requirements for a CQ exemption, is nearly triple the maximum density within the general plan estate lot zoning, and because it prevents, presents a clear health and safety hazard. If you'll reference Exhibit 1, this is a section of the CQ guidelines for infill development. The project does not qualify for a CQ categorical exemption, as it does not meet the conditions described in Chapter 3, Article 19, Section 15332A, which states, "The project is consistent with the applicable general plan designation and all applicable general plan policies, as well as with applicable zoning designations and regulations." Or D, "Approval of the project would not result in any significant effects related to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality." The project is not in conformance with the general plan, which is RE-B, residential estate B, with residential dwellings at a density of 1.0 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre. The Whaley development, not including the junior associated dwelling units, is at 5.5 units per acre, including the JADUs, which will be used for residential inhabitation. The proposed project is at a density of 9.30 dwelling units per acre, which is nearly three times the maximum allowable density in the zone. JADUs, our dwelling units, will generate additional traffic, parking needs, and demand on public services. Existing development in the RE-B zone and existing development in the majority of Fire Mountain is at a maximum of 3.5 units per acre. Now we're going to move to Exhibit 2, which is the general plan zoning map. The developer is utilizing two different zoning categories to calculate allowable density on the single 2.15-acre Whaley site, and rounding up separately to obtain an additional unit. The 2.15-acre Whaley property is one legal lot, one assessor's parcel number, with one general plan zone, residential estate B. B, and I quote, "applicable maximum for the specific zoning range and land use element of the general plan applicable to the project," meaning the entire project, is 3.5 dwelling units per acre. The parcel was never subdivided, and the existing four homes on the westerly 0.54-acre portion of the parcel are not separate legal saleable homes. They are not legal lots and do not have their own assessor's parcel numbers. As shown on the zoning exhibit, the RE-B zone extends to the middle of Kurtz Street. The lot sizes for these four Kurtz Street homes range from 4,188 to 4,488 square feet, significantly below the minimum lot size required under the zone. So the existing four homes along Kurtz Streets are already at a bonus density. Three of the four homes are not being developed at all, just being used by the developers leveraged to gain more units, concessions, and waivers on what they are actually developing. The developer will give these existing four homes their own assessor's parcel numbers in order to be able to separately sell three of the four existing homes along Kurtz Street at market prices, with the fourth existing home remodeled to an affordable housing unit. The existing four Kurtz Street homes fall below the minimum lot sizes and setbacks required under the zoning code. In legally separating these smaller lots and proving separate assessor's parcel numbers for them, the developer and builder are already receiving waivers and concessions on minimum lot sizes and setbacks. Now we'll move to Exhibit Number 3, which is the calculations for bonus density. And I do want to point out that our calculations are in red, the developers are in black. The project is not consistent with the zoning ordinance's requirements for calculation of the maximum allowable residential density, because the developer is dividing one single site into different zones and rounding up separately, then using that as a basis for calculations. The general plan for the entire site is residential estate, with a maximum of 3.5 dwelling units per acre. The total number of base units should be nine, as shown on the exhibit, not 10, but the applicant used the round-up requirement separately for the already-built and vacant portions of the site to calculate an additional unit by separately rounding up separate portions of a single parcel under the general plan residential estate zone. The project will provide one very low-income unit and compensate for the lack of profit on that existing affordable home by selling 11 market-rate homes. As is statistically proven, the affordable housing unit will most likely be rented, as the very low income required to occupy the homes will not meet Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac requirements, and will not qualify for a loan. With the exception of one existing home remodeled to an affordable housing unit, the only housing option on the Whaley development that it provides is market-rate housing. The Whaley development and cumulatively considerable projects result in adverse environmental impact due to significantly higher density than existing development in Fire Mountain, additional traffic and parking congestion, and the impact to public safety. These large homes and adjacent JADUs will nearly triple the existing density of development in compliance with the current general plan RE-B zone on the site. The additional daily trip traffic and street parking increase constitutes a significant adverse environmental and public safety impact. For these reasons, the project does not meet the conditions for a CQ categorical exemption Sections A or D. Now we'll be referencing Exhibit Number 4, which is the SRTS foot traffic path. Hunsacker Street is a walking and biking route to Palmquist Elementary, Lincoln Middle School, and Oceanside Adventist Elementary School. Hunsacker Street is not safe for walkers or cyclists due to the lack of sidewalks and unsafe traffic speeds. The Whaley development will result in higher traffic on Hunsacker and surrounding access streets in Fire Mountain. The size of the proposed homes with JADUs and their parking needs will result in overflow parking on Whaley and Hunsacker Streets, forcing children walking to school into the street. Looking at the exhibit, the Whaley site is indicated by the black star and the red circle. Dash lines show the routes for children walking or biking to the two elementary schools and one middle school along Hunsacker Street. These schoolchildren are passing directly in front of the Whaley development site, which is within two blocks of three schools. Please note the extremely close proximity of the Whaley development site to our three Fire Mountain schools and a preschool. Now going to turn to Exhibit Number 5, which is waivers and concessions by the developer. Incentives and concessions required by the Whaley development include the waiver of street frontage improvements along all public streets, including sidewalks. The Oceanside Safe Routes to School Plan dated February 2021 is a strategy to improve pedestrian and bicycle conditions in order to increase opportunities for students and their families to use active modes of transportation to get to and from school. It seeks to improve the physical built environment to make active modes of transportation safe, convenient, and comfortable. The SRTS plan is dedicated to the memory of Logan Lipton, a Lincoln Middle School student killed by a car while riding his bike to Lincoln Middle School. The SRTS plan envisions in Oceanside where all students and their families have access to safe, convenient, and healthy modes of transportation to and from school. Is the Safe Routes to School Plan something to be ignored when developers demand additional profit through waivers of street improvements and sidewalks, which would make school access safer for walkers and bike riders? Is the SRTS plan policy or merely lip service? Now we're going to move to Exhibit 6, which discusses what is SRTS. The Safe Routes to School Plan, uh-oh, we have lost technology.
There it is.
We're back. The Safe Routes to School Plan allows communities to design and build sidewalks, paths, crossings, and streets that are safer for all users and more conducive for using active modes of transportation. City staff can use the SRTS plan to identify issues and opportunities to prioritize potential short-term and long-term infrastructure improvements. This is an opportunity to build sidewalks to make streets safer. According to the Transportation Injury Mapping System, between 2012 and 2017, there were 126 collisions involving a person riding a bicycle, and 195 collisions involving a person walking within a half mile of each Oceanside school. As traffic increases, so do accidents involving pedestrians and bicyclists. The SRTS plan shows Palmquist Elementary and Lincoln Middle Schools have significant sidewalk gaps, creating challenges for bicyclists and pedestrians. Parents indicate their biggest concerns are traffic, unsafe intersections, and vehicle speed. Vehicles commonly travel at unsafe speeds along Hunsacker Street at the Whaley development location. The walk audit summary for Palmquist Elementary and Lincoln Middle Schools state the participants' main concerns include the overall lack of sidewalks in the neighborhood greatly impacting the community's ability to safely walk to school, as well as crossings, speeding, and congestion at access points to both schools during drop-off and pickup times. Whaley development does, in fact, create a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based upon objective, written, public health and safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete, i.e. Oceanside's own Safe Routes to School Plan. Now we'll switch to Exhibit 7, which is another snippet from the SRTS. With the cumulative impact of current and future residential projects at double and triple the existing density in Fire Mountain, sidewalks will need to be installed for public safety. How will the city pay for these improvements? By issuing a bond or a special assessment district? Does the city intend for Fire Mountain residents to fund sidewalks, which developers of new projects are not required to install? The sidewalk waiver the Whaley development applicant demands will reportedly save the developer more than $2 million, but the lack of sidewalks, the overflow parking from this project on Hunsacker and Whaley Streets, and the additional traffic generated will endanger the public. So is $2 million the price to compromise the safety of the public and schoolchildren? Is that enough to compensate for endangering pedestrians and cyclists in Fire Mountain solely to generate additional profit for developers and builders? Under no circumstances should waivers of public safety improvements be permitted at the expense of families and schoolchildren walking the streets. The City Council is elected to represent voters' and citizens' interests, not those of profit-driven out-of-town developers at the expense of residents. At the community meeting, the developer threatened residents with an even denser development if they didn't like the proposed Whaley development, and threatened to sue the city if the project was denied. The state threatens to sue cities unless high-density residential developments are approved, but neither the state nor the developer can sue the city for protecting public health and safety. Citizens have repeatedly warned the city about the traffic and safety hazards this project presents. The city will likely face lawsuits when, not if, people are injured due to overdevelopment approved without traffic impact studies, and with waivers for street frontage and public safety improvements. There is no traffic study provided for the Whaley development, because it falls just below the arbitrary threshold, which requires a traffic study for an individual development. The threshold, however, fails to take into consideration cumulative traffic from this development and others planned or in the pipeline, which will have a permanent negative impact on traffic and safety in Fire Mountain. Under CQ guidelines, cumulatively considerable means that the incremental effects of an individual project are significant when viewed in connection with the effects of past projects or of other current projects and of probable future projects. Permitting the high-density Whaley development will absolutely result in developers demanding the same bonus densities, incentives, concessions, and waivers to development standards, zoning, and public safety requirements throughout Fire Mountain. The impact of this much higher-density development not in conformance with the existing neighborhood will be excessive noise, population density and traffic congestions, demand on public services, and the destruction of the uniquely positive attributes of the neighborhood. Fire Mountain streets are not designed to handle the additional traffic these high-density projects will generate. Most streets in Fire Mountain do not have sidewalks, and waving sidewalk imp- Most streets in Fire Mountain do not have sidewalks, and waiving sidewalk improvement requirements will result in the expense ultimately being passed through to residents. Developers must be required to provide street improvements and sidewalks on new construction. The city risks legal exposure by approving projects at the expense of public safety with waivers for street frontage and sidewalk improvements located just two blocks from three schools. Developments such as the Whaley project do not happen in a void. The traffic impacts of each smaller development accumulates and affects all of Fire Mountain. Residents along Ivy and Avocado Streets cannot safely walk on the street due to massive increases in traffic cutting through Fire Mountain from Vista Way to Oceanside Boulevard and speeding along narrow streets with no sidewalks. The Planning Commission could have and should have taken the opportunity to consider Oceanside's SRTS plan, traffic and safety concerns, and placed the inclusion of street frontage improvements and sidewalks as a condition of the Whaley Development. The city council now has the opportunity to correct that error. The Whaley Development is nowhere near public transit or employment centers. Allowing for waivers of sidewalks is in direct conflict with the Oceanside Safe Routes to School Plan, which is an objective written public health or safety standard. The Whaley Development at significantly higher density than existing lots in Fire Mountain with waivers for sidewalks and street improvements represents a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact to public health. According to the Affordable Housing Law, this is legal grounds to disapprove the project. Pedestrians and bicyclists are in danger without sidewalks in front of the Whaley Development, again, just two blocks from three schools. The combined traffic impact of the Whaley high-density development and others like it in Fire Mountain show substantial evidence that the proposed Whaley Development will have a significant adverse environmental impact. The project is not in compliance with requirements for categorical exemption A or D. It only takes one piece of substantial evidence showing the project may have a significant adverse impact to require preparation of a full EIR under the fair argument standard of CEQA. Residents for the protection of Fire Mountain are not against development. We are against overdevelopment resulting in double or triple the existing lot density in Fire Mountain and significantly higher traffic than the neighborhood can accommodate. We are against dangerous unwalkable streets due to ongoing traffic increases with development and cut-through traffic. The 500 Fire Mountain residents who signed the petition to deny the Whaley Development are sending a very clear message to the city of Oceanside that the combined traffic impact of new developments in Fire Mountain must be considered and that the character of Fire Mountain will be destroyed with high-density developments in the neighborhood. The developer and builder are fighting for maximum profit. Fire Mountain residents are fighting for public safety and protection of schoolchildren. We are requesting the city council overturn approval of the proposed Whaley Development project waivers, putting public health and safety at risk. We are requesting denial of the Class 32 categorical exemption pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15332 infill development and that the city require a full environmental traffic impact and traffic study for the proposed Whaley Development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's two minutes, 30 seconds left for rebuttal. So next is the applicant, and that is RREG Investments. Do we have the applicant? Thank you. And if you could state your name for the record, you will have up to 20 minutes. Names, state your names for the record. You will have up to 20 minutes and no rebuttal.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I'm Dan Niebaum with the Lightfoot Planning Group, offices in Carlsbad, representing the applicant on this item. Also with us tonight is Tim Hutter with Allen Matkins, and I'm going to turn some of my time over to him a little bit to talk about some density bonus comments on the project. Yeah, we appreciate the chance to be here tonight. We appreciate staff's work on this project throughout and concur with their response to the appeal items. That was presented, the Planning Commission, which was unanimously approved 5-0 by the Planning Commission. We have a project that will bring additional single-family housing for the community at varying affordability levels. And we talked about the existing development pattern that's at this site right now. There's four existing homes on Kurtz. Those are going to be preserved as part of this development project, and the eight new homes will be built on the larger lot area, but those homes don't exist on lots right now on Kurtz. And we'll have the affordable unit also placed on Kurtz. So you're really getting three different affordability levels with this project. And with this development pattern, this preserves those homes. There was some discussion earlier about the zoning in this area and the general plan in this area. Correct, there is one zoning category on this site, but there are two general plan categories. I'm showing the city's general plan map here. Staff's well aware of this as part of their presentation, but that line divides the site in half. The homes on Kurtz are in the SFDR category, and the other part of the lot is in the EBR, general plan category. Under density bonus law, it's very clear that you divide those categories and you produce two separate math equations and round each up. And Sergio could speak to that. We've worked with staff on that, and we presented that. But I think it's important to note, you can see the development pattern when you look at this simple map, that the lots to the south and west are SFDR, and they're denser as Sergio presented. They're at the five, over five units per acre, and the lots on the north side are a little less dense, the two, two and a half units per acre. This is our development pattern. Sergio had shown this, but I wanted to show it again, and he went through the waivers and incentives we were asking for. But the lots one through eight are the newer homes, and those lots actually range, the gross square footage is 8,700 to over 10,000 square feet. The net, when you take the driveway out of the lots that are in the middle, the private drive, they are at just under 7,000 to 9,000 square feet net. These are 25, just under 2,500 square foot homes. They do have a junior ADU in each home, and that's less than 500 square feet. It's 468 to 491 square feet. But those homes, that's a separate unit, but each of these homes has a separate parking space for that unit. Each of these homes has a two-car garage and also has parking in the driveway for two units or for two vehicles. So there's five parking spaces on each of these lots. The existing homes on Kurtz have one because they're a single-car garage, smaller home. These are two-story homes. The maximum building height to the peak of the roof is 31, just under 31 and a half feet. The height to the second floor ceiling is really more like 21 feet or 24 feet. Again, this pattern clearly shows how this would preserve these homes on Kurtz. Sergio went through the density bonus calculations, and when you do apply the calculations, we could do up to 14 units on this site. This project's proposing 12 units. I think you go back and look at that layout, the developer really looked at a number of different scenarios for development on this site, and this is the one that really made the most sense. It's consistent with the lotting pattern, the neighborhood, and it provides the homes that meet the goals of the project. 14 units on this site, and it also allows us to preserve those homes on Kurtz. 14 units on this site would probably result in demoing the entire site in a different lot pattern, in smaller lots. Sergio had gone through our incentives and our waivers related to the undergrounding and the frontage improvements. I'm not going to go through those in too much detail, but I did want to stop on the traffic that was mentioned. We looked at traffic on this. We had a traffic engineer work with the city traffic staff. We did a VMT analysis and a letter, and we submitted that. And the project trip generation, we're very conservative. We included the ADUs, the junior ADUs, in the trip generation. And you don't technically need to do that, but we did that. And even doing that, we end up with only 118 ADT, which is very, very low. The city's standards and general standards only require analysis when you have over 200 ADT. We did a vehicle miles traveled screening analysis. We're well under the 1,000 ADT. We're consistent with the general plan with the single-family development on this site. And again, the project screens out of VMT, and the project doesn't come close to meeting the threshold for a transportation analysis on this site. That was long determined by staff early in the process. Sergio had shown you some of the exhibits, but I wanted to show them again. A lot of thought has gone into the architecture on these homes. I think they're really great-looking homes. They have a lot of offsets, roof detail, architectural details. They're kind of a contemporary and craftsman mix. There's several different elevations to mix in with the eclectic of Fire Mountain. We think this is a really well-designed project that's going to be a great fit for this neighborhood. This is the street view Sergio had shown you. And again, this is an angled view, but more of a nighttime view. Again, they're two-story homes. The rooftop, the peak of the roof is the max roof, but they're not, they don't have the entire mass because a lot of thought's gone into making these five-sided architecture with some interesting reforms and building offsets. So I'm going to leave that there and turn the rest of this time over to Tim Hutter.
Honorable Mayor, council members, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As Dan mentioned, my name is Tim Hutter. I'm an attorney at Allen Matkins. I'm representing the applicant tonight, frequently represent developers and the Building Industry Association with regard to housing issues and specifically density bonus law. I sat through the first presentation and the first hearing that you had tonight. Obviously, you all have a significant familiarity with density bonus law, so I'm just going to walk you through some of the basics, but also talk to you about a couple of new things. And I think City Attorney Mullen had done a good job of preparing you for that also. With respect to state density bonus law, I think you all understand that when you include the required percentage of affordable units, you are, you as a developer, are entitled then to a project with certain incentives, certain concessions. In other circumstances, reduction of parking standards, and the state has made that decision. The state has also established a requirement for findings that must be made by a city in order to deny these projects and to deny those benefits. That's the specific adverse impact language that we heard earlier, and it has to be a specific adverse impact based on public health and safety. That's defined in reference to the Housing Accountability Act, as City Attorney Mullen mentioned earlier. The Housing Accountability Act, Government Code Section 65589.5 protects all housing development projects. It's got two different sections. One section is dealing specifically with higher affordability projects, 20% or more, and it's got one section that deals with all housing development projects. So this particular project would be qualifying for the protection under the Housing Accountability Act. It's under Section J, if you care. And in order to define specific adverse impact, that's where we look, is 65589.5-J. J1 says that a specific adverse impact has to be significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable. Okay? And it has to be based on objective written standards. Now, you heard the applicant, the appellant earlier reference one of those written standards, the traffic standard, and say that's an arbitrary standard. Well, that is the objective written standard that you are all here to apply. People may disagree with the objective written standards that do apply and that are in place, but it's not, now is not the time to go change those standards or decide that we need to lower the standards in order to trigger traffic mitigation or traffic requirements. You all understand that. So the specific adverse impact on the traffic issue, I think, is clear. One of the other arguments that was raised, I'm not sure that it was actually part of the appeal, but it was raised tonight, so I'll address it, dealt with this specific objection relating to the incentive for frontage improvements. And the fact that the applicant is proposing to, rather than spend $1.8 million or more, those numbers I think are over a year old, but let's call it $1.74 million that would be required in order to build those frontage improvements, the applicant is saying, under state law, that that is a specific financial cost that can be shaved off of this project in order to make the project work, in order to bring about more housing for the city of Oceanside, in order to provide that affordable unit that would not otherwise be provided. And in that circumstance, unless the city can make a finding saying that actually there is no identifiable savings, the city is not in a position to deny that incentive. And specific to that incentive, too, I want to point out, the incentive and the standard that is being raised has to do with the construction of frontage improvements in an area where those sidewalks don't currently exist, right? The improvements, by their very nature, that are being requested or that are being left out of this project as part of the incentive, don't exist there today. And so to the extent that the city were to make a finding that the grant of an incentive in this project would create a threat to public health or safety, what the city would really be finding is that there is a current condition today that there is a threat to public health and safety on those roads, right? And that would exist regardless of what is happening with respect to the project. That's not what you, the finding that you need to make with respect to the density bonus because the incentive itself, the fact that the developer isn't building yet, or whatever it is that the developer is bringing about, the existence of those homes themselves is not what is triggering that requirement or what would be triggering that alleged threat. You've heard nothing from the appellant with respect to, again, the quantifiable, direct impact that you need to find. I want to address one other point that was made by the appellant, and because it's critical under the Housing Accountability Act, again, this is Section J3. What Section J3 says is that the receipt of a density bonus incentive or waiver is not a valid basis to find an inconsistency with the general plan. In other words, the housing accountability answers the question for you. If you are using density bonus to get more units, that is not a basis under state law to find that there is an inconsistency that would otherwise disqualify you from the benefits of an infill exemption or the benefits of the Housing Accountability Act. And so the laws are intended to work together, and they do here. And that's why your staff has found and made the recommendation that they did. I want to, I mentioned that I was going to give you an update on some recent case law. You may have heard about it, but it's a case called Bankers Hill 150 versus the City of San Diego, came out in January of 2022, just recently. It was a case from the Court of Appeal affirming the City of San Diego's decision to approve a project and rejecting a neighbor's litigation, where those neighbors claimed that the project was too tall, too dense, didn't fit into their community, and shouldn't have been granted, and should not have been granted waivers. The court affirmed existing law that density bonus projects that meet the affordability requirements for density bonus are eligible for those waivers if the identified development standards would physically preclude the project as designed. In other words, it does not matter if the project could have been designed differently, if the neighbors would have drawn it differently, if a, and this actually happened in a neighboring city recently, they hired an architect. The city said, "We're going to hire an architect and design the project ourselves and give you the same number of units." All of those different parameters or different opportunities have been rejected by the Court of Appeal. Court of Appeal has said, "If the project qualifies for density bonus, provides the affordable units, the city's discretion is limited." I understand that that is a point of contention in this room. I think Councilmember Weiss had a good idea, and frankly, a lot of cities are doing that, is moving in direction of saying, "Look, if we as a council don't have the ability to make this decision, we shouldn't be frustrating ourselves, frustrating the residents, making them feel like we do have that opportunity." Here, I want to just point out that the waiver requests are consistent with very typical density bonus issues, in that where you have more units going onto the same-sized parcel, you are going to have an impact on very standard development standards, and it's a typical set of those development standards. You're going to have smaller lots, right? So you're not going to hit your minimum lot size. You're going to have narrower lots. You're going to have smaller setbacks, and you're going to have related impacts on lot ratios and lot coverage ratios. So those things that you're seeing on the list of waivers for this project are exactly what you'd expect to see, right? In essence, if you think about this parcel as a pie, right, and you start out with a pie that is going to be cut into four slices, well, yeah, there's going to be certain sizes for each of those slices. But when you come along and say, "Okay, now we're going to cut it into six," what do you expect to happen? Are you going to be able to have the same-sized slice for everybody? No, you're not. The slices are going to get smaller, and you're going to have to make those changes. That is what the density bonus law says and actually allows for purposes of the waivers. I'm here with the applicant. I'm also here with Dan, obviously, to answer any additional questions that you may have. I understand that density bonus projects can be difficult, that these are projects that require a great deal of scrutiny. that these are projects that require a great deal of scrutiny. There's nothing in the record here today to support, from the Planning Commission, to support the idea of a denial of this project or to support the specific adverse impact findings that you would need to make in order to deny the project. Thanks so much.
Thank you. This is now the time for public input and comments from the public regarding this specific project. Do we have any requests to speak on this?
Yes, we have two speakers, but one of the speakers was the appellant.
Okay, so the other one.
So Katie Taylor.
Keith who?
Katie Taylor.
Oh, Katie Taylor, okay.
By the way, you are impressive.
Also, just unfortunately, there was time for a rebuttal on the appellant. She has two minutes.
Yeah, I was going to wait till after the public.
Okay, all right.
Let me sit down?
Oh, no, you can continue, sorry.
Clearly, I've mentioned it more than once. Hi, council again. I live in Fire Mountain, so clearly, in my opinion, this project does not meet the Fire Mountain neighborhood's standard, quality of life, period. But I want to ask this council something. Did anybody listen to Jerome Powell today for two hours, our Fed Chair? Guess what? I did. And the only thing that made save us from having this project built? Citibank just gave 50%. We're going to go into recession. Anybody here buy or sell property 2008, 2011? I know builders who went bankrupt. I sold the properties. So don't be surprised if we can look down the road with the inflation that's happening, the increase in interest rates, because Fedman, Fed Chair Powell said today he hasn't stopped raising them yet this year. And when things like that happen and the cost of supplies, my friend does commercial roofing. When she was paying $30 for a sheet of plywood, she's paying 140 now. So we can do all these projects, but I'm telling you, look down the road when we're doing projects like this that don't fit the neighborhood, and then interest rates get so high, and then the multitude of problems. I've lived through it. I lived through it hard. Citibank just announced 50%. Like I said, we're going to go into recession. But Dennis Bones, Dennis Bones, Density Bonus Law with ADU, is that crazy? Why don't you just say you're putting two houses on one lot? It's crazy to think that that doesn't increase density. But once again, it's not your problem, city council. It's not the Planning Commission of Oceanside's problem. These problems were created in Sacramento, and the only place they're going to get solved. So I feel for you guys. I agree with Councilmember Weiss. I think there needs to be a special meeting. I think everybody needs to know exactly what Sacramento controls when you're doing a project and what the city controls as far as building. It's not fair to you guys to take this burden when you don't have any control anymore. And I think the average person living in a city does not understand this. I've had this conversation with the Carlsbad City Council. Everybody's going through this. And is it going to ruin our neighborhoods? Absolutely. But I'll tell you what, I suggest everybody go listen to Fed Chair Powell today and think what's coming down the line.
Thank you. This is the time for the public to speak on this item. If you wish to speak, please approach the podium. There are two podiums. You have up to three minutes to speak. Please identify yourself, spell your last name. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. Arlene Hammer Schmidt. Wow, rural-ish, Fire Mountain. It's been a long time. If I were all you, my brain would be dead, not just my glutes. Okay. There is something that this city council could direct staff to do about public safety and health, and that is to develop quantifiable, measurable standards. It's in the law that everybody says ties their hands, but we're not taking the options that we do have. So, you know, let's quit saying, "My hands are tied." Our hands are not completely tied. Direct staff to develop quantifiable, measurable standards to protect public health and safety. I know the speaker for, I don't know any of these people personally, but I heard the speaker for the appellant measure public safety several times. But staff says it's okay, what's in the plan, because of the standards that they have to measure that by. That could be changed in the interest of our quality of life in this city. You have actions that you are not taking. Please take them. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Dennis McFadden. I live at 1640 Huntsaker Street, directly across the street from this project. My family moved there in 1995. I was nine years old, went to Palm West Elementary School, Lincoln Middle School, graduated Oceanside High School, go Pirates. I live still in this residence, and every day I see children, mothers, strollers, walking on the street, including my own. I am a now proud new father of a seven-week-old.
Congratulations.
Wife's at home with a child, but I'm here today because this is very important.
Yes.
Just last week, a car swerved in front of us. The driver was on his phone, and I gave him, you know, the sign to slow down and pay attention. He was right there. The street is dangerous. In the last five years, my neighbors and I woke up to four hit-and-run crashes, smashing vehicles and mailboxes. We stopped calling the police because they can't do anything. The street is dangerous to all pedestrians, especially on trash day, when the neighbors have to look around the trash can to make sure it's okay to keep walking. Inevitably, we're going to need sidewalks. And as the lawyer said, these homes aren't causing the problems. Agreed. But we will need to decide eventually which side of the street is the sidewalk going to be on. Maybe it's going to be on the west side, where these homes are. Maybe it's going to be on the east side, where my home is. I'd have to give up some concessions if that happened. I'd lose part of my front yard. I'm sure setbacks are going to be considered. But these four homes, these new ones, will be considerably closer to the street curve than any other homes on the street, probably making that side less appealing for a sidewalk. I think the residents of Huntsaker and the entire Fire Mountain deserve some forethought and planning prior to allowing an exemption to the existing zoning. Please consider the SRTS argument made in the appeals presentation this evening as a legal path to deny this project. I know the fancy lawyer said some intimidating things. Please protect our neighborhood, our residents, and children. Please protect baby Jack Savage McFadden.
Any other requests to speak? Okay, I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. Yes. Yes. Come on up, you have.
Two minutes, 30 seconds.
Two minutes, 30 seconds.
Can we add a backup projector?
Can you help her with the overhead? Got it.
So one of the things that I'd like to address that I heard the lawyer on behalf of the developer mention was that we had discussed the threshold where a traffic study is necessary is arbitrary. And he cited the section of the Affordable Housing Code that mentions that there has to be objective written public health or safety standards. As they existed on the date the application was deemed complete, he referenced the Affordable Housing Act to be able to justify some of these waivers and concessions. However, what I did not hear him mention was the Oceanside Safe Route to School Plan, which is literally a significant, quantifiable, direct, or unavoidable impact based on objective, written, public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete. The Oceanside City Schools wrote that Safe Routes to School Plan to prevent additional deaths, such as Logan Lipton, so that we could have safe routes to school. And the development that is on this site does, in fact, present higher density, more families moving in, more vehicle trips, and more risk to students, where you can literally see that red footpath on the examples in front of you or on the projector that they walk directly in front of, not only on Huntsaker, but also on the street that heads west towards the coast. So they are walking on two sides of the development. So we find that the developer's lack of discussion on behalf of the Safe Routes to School Plan does not recognize that that is an objective written document giving the city legal grounds to prevent all of these waivers and concessions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so it's to the council, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you for the appellant and all the speakers. Got to see some old faces. Good to see you, brother. I know Fire Mountain very well. I've done a lot of business over the years, a lot of open houses. I've actually owned and sold in Fire Mountain. It's a very special community. And one of the tranquil, unique dynamics of the community is there's no sidewalks. And I think the community really appreciates that dynamic. And so putting sidewalks in Fire Mountain, I think, is going to be a really difficult task. I don't know what that would look like. But I do want to ask our city attorney, with respect to the safe passages to school referenced over and over, are there legal grounds to look at that as policy to translate their request? If you can.
With respect to this appeal and this project?
Yes.
I haven't heard anything that would provide a basis for meeting the significant adverse impact test. I haven't heard, I don't think the Safe Routes to School standard was mentioned in the appeal, but even if it were considered, be considered, I haven't heard what specific provision that's been adopted by the city of Oceanside this project would violate. I think the issue is, is there an existing condition out there that may be violative of that plan, not how this project violates it?
Okay, thank you. We've heard several times tonight, and I think more and more the public is being made aware that we have limited control and discretion on projects like this where, you know, density bonus is included. But I do think there is some, there is some things we can control. And there are some things I would like to potentially look at, and I'll hear my other colleagues. We, through our budgetary process, we approved some funding to go toward traffic calming. And I know in the past, through projects, I know out by Jeffrey's Ranch and the high school that went in, there was grant money and funding that was available to look at, you know, safe patches, passages for students and families to walk their kids to school. And so my question to staff is, when we're looking in the future to the traffic calming and any funding sources for safe passages, in my opinion, I think we should focus and prioritize communities where, that are near schools, where you're going to have a lot more of that foot traffic like we have here in Fire Mountain. And so I just wanted some maybe comments from staff on, is there any planning for traffic calming in the Fire Mountain area? Or has that conversation came up? Because I hear that complaint quite often.
Yes, Honorable mayor and council members, staff recently did develop some criteria that was shared with council in regards to how the streets would be, traffic calming projects would be prioritized based on the funding that was recently allocated. Generally, the way that that's been looked at and the way that we were planning on approaching it is essentially going down the list in order of, in order of the requests that were received. And we have a years-long list with several hundred projects. So, you know, if council as a whole were to give us direction to reexamine the way in which those projects are prioritized, we could certainly do that. But as of right now, it's essentially first come, first served, assuming they meet the thresholds and the standards that were outlined in the program that we had presented.
Got it. And then lastly, what is the likelihood, in your opinion, that sidewalks would ever be approved? What would, what would have to happen for sidewalks to be approved in Fire Mountain? Like, what would that look like? I just don't see it as a, I just don't see it ever possible. Like, I just, to even talk about it is laughable. I just don't see it as a possibility, is that?
Yeah, well, typically, in a community such as this, it was developed without sidewalks, you know, deliberately. It's a very complicated process. And, you know, obviously, the biggest issue is the right-of-way that's available to install those sidewalks. And then, obviously, the cost involved as well. It should be, you know, monumental.
Okay, very good. I have no further questions, thank you.
Councilmember Weiss.
I do have a concern about sidewalks, particularly as it relates, not necessarily to Whaley or Huntsaker, but there's currently sidewalk on Kurt Street from California Street to the northern portion of this particular piece of property. And to me, there needs to be a continuous path of travel the entire length. And the lack of sidewalk as proposed for this project, to me, is a specific adverse impact to safety. To not put that piece in, to connect that continuous path of travel, to me, is a specific issue and specific impact.
No other lights? I'm sure you would. Corey, did you want to say something?
I would like more information on sidewalks. Fire Mountain, my family's in Fire Mountain, and it is a very special area. I mean, I actually like the design of the houses. I think they look great. But if there could be sidewalks on one side, what would that look like?
I mean, Honorable mayor and council members, again, you know, it would be a very complicated equation to take a look at something like that. But certainly, if we got council direction of staff to look at that issue in Fire Mountain, or if there's particular areas of Fire Mountain that you would like us to look at, then we can certainly do that. There, you know, there are actually little bits and pieces of sidewalks. As a matter of fact, I think there's an ongoing sidewalk project on Grand View, which is going in. And so, I mean, it is possible for short segments, but, you know, obviously, there is, there are also members in the community who don't want sidewalks and who kind of like the rural look. So it is, it is kind of a mixed bag out there. But again, if we were to receive council direction to look at it in whatever way we want to, we'd certainly come back to council with some thoughts and more detailed recommendations.
Okay, no other lights. Fire Mountain is a very, very special place. I had an opportunity to learn a lot from Harriet Bledsoe about the formation of Fire Mountain and how it was actually part of Carlsbad and, or actually, part of the county before Carlsbad was incorporated, I believe. And so Fire Mountain community actually negotiated with the city of Oceanside to be annexed. It allowed itself and voted to be annexed by the city of Oceanside on very certain conditions, which is what we call "character." And I think in this case, I think that doesn't really explain that this is such critical, these were critical criteria, because it was, it was, it was farmland. It was farmland, and the community said, "We want to keep the rural rustic nature of our community, hence no sidewalks." So that character, that zoning, that density is all very part of that community. And anything higher than that, yes, is going to cause public safety issues. It was a very, very, very specific plan that was incorporated in our, in our general plan. So where someone from the outside might say, "Oh, it's character. Character's nothing. Character's just, you know, what kind, you know, how, how the roofs are pitched, or, you know, whether it's single family." No, here, "character" means quite a different thing. It is part and parcel of this community. And I do feel that adding traffic where it is supposed to be, maintain rural rustic nature, has been becoming more and more of a public safety issue, adding more traffic. That's why there are some places where sidewalks have been added because of the threat to the safety of the youth, the children who are attending the schools there. So I do feel that it is a significant adverse impact. This project presents a significant adverse impact because it's changing, you know, because it was meant to be lower density, and that's why everything fits in the way it has. So. So it is, I feel that it is triggering that, this very specific project. I do feel that the cumulative impacts that have been brought out is causing it more and more. The attorney that spoke said, "Well, if, if what you're saying is that it's going to be a public safety, well, that means you're admitting that it's currently a public safety issue." Yeah, that some parts it is. But it's because of the higher densities. Has it reached a critical mass? I think that this project gets it closer to that critical mass. And I don't want to have the death of a youth, of a young person, or anybody walking on the streets, because you have to walk on the street to be able to walk, period. I see people walking all the time in the middle of the street, well, on the side of the street. And people tend to be very neighborly, but there are times when people are running late and speeding, and, you know, it happens. So my, my input into this is that I do feel that it does meet that threshold. And I am persuaded by this very articulate young woman who made some very good arguments, didn't just make generalized comments, she went into it very deeply, and, which reminded me, I couldn't remember Harriet's name, it's like, it's Harriet Bledsoe. The Bledsoes actually led the, the charge to protecting our parkland. I don't know if you know that, but put it on the ballot, that no parkland can be changed from park use to a different use unless it's on the ballot. So there is a tradition there for Fire Mountain. I had all the paperwork that she shared with me. It was lots and lots of paperwork on the, on the origin of Fire Mountain. And so I would find for the appellant, so it still says City Maggiore, Deanna. It's kind of funny. Mr. Borrego, was that you? Or was that...
I think it was the city planner.
Actually, Mayor, it was here, me, city planner. So the applicant has indicated that they're willing to install sidewalk along the Kurt's Front, and directed by council to do so. So that's on the table.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
So I feel very differently about the last two projects we've seen. Again, this is Fire Mountain. I agree with the mayor with that, that Fire Mountain's very unique. And as I've said for the last couple of years, I want to keep single-family density the way it is, and we have enough space in our corridors and other parts of the city to make arena numbers and provide that affordable housing. This is a project where we, it's very frustrating, don't have that ability to address the density bonus issues and the waivers. So I have been working with the residents in the neighborhood. This has been trying to figure out a way that we can keep zoning in that neighborhood that way. And after talking with staff for months and the city attorney for months, I have been hard-pressed to find a specific adverse impact on public health or safety based on an objective written standard necessary to allow us to oppose, or us to overturn the planning commission's approval. And so that's why I wanted to ask the mayor. From what I heard from the mayor, that was not, also not an objective written standard necessary. But however, just as the prior, the prior public hearing, I, there wasn't one provided in that either. But I am willing, at this point, if you will take ownership of the issue, and I will second your motion, but I am very uncomfortable with how that's an standard of legal. But what have we done? What have, what have you worked with staff to find that and find a written objective standard before tonight so we can prevail in court? I mean, just so that I'm more comfortable seconding your motion.
Was there a motion? I don't think there has been a motion yet, right?
If I'm, if I'm gonna, if you're gonna make a motion based on an objective written standard, I'd like to know that objective written standard.
Yeah, I heard, I heard you. I was just trying to remember if, if anyone had made a motion previously.
I said I will second your motion.
So I don't think anyone has, right?
I will second your motion.
Okay. I, I move that we find for the appellant based on the arguments that she has made, and that we, there is a very specific adverse impact that she has described, and that is having to do with the traffic. This, this character, that we, what we call "character" is a rural rustic nature of, of the, of the community that has, in fact, as higher densities have been allowed, has in fact, made it more, more dangerous with respect to the, the streets. It's, it's, I, I have seen cars driving when the kids are out. There's also the kids that come from Crown Heights going up the hill. I mean, all of this is, is getting to this critical mass, and I, I believe that we have reached that. So that is my motion.
I still, I, I said, I still haven't heard an objective written standard. And that's easy to say that we're going to do this, but this has to stand up in court. And it's easy to know that the rest of the council understands there's not an objective written standard, and you can say that. So you're the mayor, you're an attorney. I'm gonna, if you say that you believe there truly is...
I do believe.
You do believe it? Enough, then I'm...
I do believe.
I will support you.
Councilmember Rodriguez, sorry.
I am, look, I, I am failing to connect a nexus point between the building of this project and existing issues that the community is already experiencing. There's issues now, even if this development never goes forth, or the developer goes, "Okay, I'm going to build two houses here instead." These issues are here, period. They're here regardless, right now, today, they're here. This development isn't creating them, they're here. I think that we have a cut-through problem. I've personally cut through to go to Walmart. I don't want to drive all the way around and deal with traffic. I cut through. It's just how the nature of the, the ease, I think we all have. Come on, raise your hand. You guys know you have.
I don't cut through.
Um...
I respect this neighborhood.
But the issue at hand here is a safe passage for schooling, for kids, and we just heard the developer say that they're willing to put a sidewalk and take on that cost, meeting Councilmember Weiss's objectives and continuing that. I think we're going to piss off a lot of people in Fire Mountain with adding sidewalks, now that we're meeting the community's concern of a safe passage. And so, since they're adding the sidewalk now, can you explain to me the health and safety issue? The sidewalk's going to be installed.
It's a long concept, I mean, why?
It's being installed. So I'm, I'm trying to understand the nexus. As much as I want to, I'm trying to understand the nexus, because, I mean, we could vote this down, and then this is going to go to court and cost our city money. And that's, that's going to be horrible, but if that's the direction you guys want to go, great. But they just said they're willing to build a sidewalk, so...
Councilmember Weiss.
I just want to clarify that the, the motion to deny is based on the impact to the neighborhood character by the increased density.
It's, it's based on the, the impact, the cumulative impacts of the traffic that is creating a public safety.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah. No other lights. Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there was.
Is that right, Mr. City Clerk?
There was a motion on the floor from Mayor Sanchez to move to find for the appellant. However, Councilmember Keim did not formally second the motion of Mayor Sanchez.
And should that motion go to a vote? And just for council's clarification, we would need to come back as a staff with a resolution of denial that articulates all of those specific findings necessary, so I think we'll need your assistance with that.
We have a "character" finding.
So I don't know if that was a formal second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Let's vote.
Two, three, Jensen Rodriguez, Weiss, no.
I'm going to move approval staff recommendation with the inclusion of the connection of the sidewalk on Kurt Street as a condition.
Huntsaker is a real issue.
There's no sidewalk on Huntsaker anywhere else.
There's a motion and a second. No other lights. Please vote.
Three, two, Sanchez, Keim, no.
Going back to our general items, my apologies to everybody. It is now 8:40. Item number 36, that is award of a contract to Cox Construction Company of Vista, California in the amount of $13.5 million for Fire Station One project. Authorized funds in the amount of $1.6 million to cover permits, fees, furniture, fixtures, and equipment. IT-related equipment, specialty inspection, construction administration, tribal consultation, and cultural resources monitoring, construction support and administration allocation, authorization for contingencies in the amount of $1.3 million or 10% of the construction costs, authorization for the city engineer to execute change orders up to 10% of the construction cost for a total cost of $16.5 million, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. We're going to, we are going to begin with a report by Mr. Brian Thomas, our city engineer.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. I'll try to keep this short since we have a few other general items coming behind us. Item before you tonight is articulated is the award of a contract to Cox Construction Company of Vista, California in the amount of $13.6 million for the construction of Fire Station Number One, to authorize contingency in the amount of $1.357 million or 10% of the, the bid amount, and authorize the city engineer to execute contract change orders up to this amount. Authorize an additional amount of $1.6 million to cover permit fees, inspections, FFE, IT, low voltage equipment, and cultural resources monitoring for a complete total of $16.57 million, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. Little bit of background, on September 21st, September 2021, city council accepted a Department of Defense local community cooperation grant in the amount of $3.5 million. A requirement of this grant was to obtain NEPA environmental clearance, which will be obtained prior to the start of construction. In December of 2021, seven contractors pre-qualified to submit bids for the project, and five bids were received on February 24th, which ranged from $12.35 million to $15.5 million. The project estimate was $16 to $18.5 million. On April 6th, city council rejected all bids due to bid errors and the lack of the required NEPA permitting, which began last October. As stated previously, the NEPA clearance and permitting is required to this, prior to the start of work, as part of the DOD grant. Award of a contract in March 2022, as originally anticipated, would have resulted in a delayed start of approximately four months at additional cost to the city. As such, at that time, it was deemed in the best interest of the city to reject all bids and to rebid the project to allow additional time for the NEPA permit to be processed and to allow the contractors to correct errors in their bids. During this time since last October, staff has worked with the State Historic Preservation Office and the Native American Heritage Commission in order to obtain concurrence with the city's secret determination of a categorical exemption as an infill development. We completed consultations with the San Pasquale Band of Mission Indians, the Rincon Band of Luciano Indians, and the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians, and have attained their concurrence to move forward with the project, and they will be invited to monitor the site during construction and grading activities. The DOD is currently finalizing the needed signatures for NEPA, and we should have those signatures by the end of next week. Again, the project was rebid on April 18th. As part of the requirement for rebid process, we did open up the bidding to other general contractors to see if we could get additional contractors interested in bidding. They were required to submit the same pre-qualification paperwork prior contractors did. On May 31st, five bids were received. Four of those were from the previously pre-qualified contractors, with one contractor submitting the required information. These bids ranged from $13.6 million to $16.23 million, while the engineers' estimates stayed the same at $16 to $18.5 million. The cost increase between the first bid submitted and the rebid submitted ranged from $16,000 to $1.58 million, with Cox Construction resubmitted bid at $16,000 higher than its first bid, while PCN III, the second low bid submitted theirs, at $1.58 million higher than its first bid. Staff has reviewed the bid from Cox Construction, has reviewed its contractor's license, its subcontractor's license, and have found them to be in compliance with state law and the city requirements. Staff has also reached out to their references and found them to be in order. There was one bid protest that was received via email. Staff reviewed the protest and determined that it did not lack merit. Our recommendation for the award has not changed.
Lacked merit. You meant, you meant lacked merit.
Lacked merit. Thank you. So our staff recommendation is to award a contract to Cox Construction Company of Vista, California in the amount of $13.79 million. Authorized contingency in the amount of 10%, or $13.578. Authorize the city engineer to execute change orders up to this amount. Authorize additional funds of $1.61 million to cover permits, FFNE, low voltage, and IT, cultural resources monitoring, for a total contract amount of $16,546,900. And finally, authorize the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. I remain available at your convenience to address any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We have one request to speak from Mel Vernon.
Good evening, Captain Vernon.
Good evening.
Sorry about the delay.
Thank you, Mel Vernon, San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. I just wanted to, and, yeah, it's a long night, absolutely. So just a few words to say that, you know, so many times, our tribe is called to check over some of these developments and our monitoring, and I just want to acknowledge the fact that we've been working together for quite a while, also noticing that the, the federal tribes that are Luceno sometimes get a lot of print. And, but I just wanted to let you know that as a tribe, a legitimate tribe, working with the city here, as a government-to-government relationship, that I don't get a chance to come and acknowledge you, as probably I should. And there's some other issues that I'd like to bring up later, but, you know, it's a long night, and I appreciate it. And I just look forward to working together on some of these projects to help build, I guess, in a sense, a better Oceanside. The river and some of these issues, Fire Mountain, I, I've been dealing with issues on all those places and seen some old friends here. So just going to keep it short, and just want to thank you in a lodge, and from our tribe, the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians, acknowledging that we want to continue with a mutual beneficial relationship in the future.
Thank you. And it is the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians that, that was, the tribe that was originally here in this valley, in...
Yes.
From the coast east.
Yes, and, and...
For 10,000 years.
Yeah, well, the land is what we're talking about here. And in the future, I'd like to approach the council and talk about bringing land acknowledgement to this place, this is a traditional territory of the Luceno people here, and obviously, our first development that got here, you know. So we were here before the first development, so a lot of these...
You're pointing to the mission.
Yes, a lot of, a lot of these issues have been brought up many times before, so thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. No other requests to speak?
Other requests to speak on this item.
Okay, to the council. Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval staff recommendation.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved. Five oh.
Item number 37, adoption of a resolution appropriating... Item number 37, adoption of a resolution appropriating $4 million in road maintenance and rehabilitation account funds provided by Senate Bill 1 to City Gas Tax Fund 265, and approve the city's project list for fiscal year '22 to '23. We have a report by Mr. David Toshack. Is that right? Close enough, okay. It's getting late, sorry.
Honorable Mayor, council members, David Toshack, Principal Civil Engineer, Development Services Department. Before you knight a Senate Bill 1, List of Projects for the Road Rehabilitation Accountability Act, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution appropriating $4,29,048 in maintenance and rehabilitation account RMRA funds provided by SB 1, and also approve the city's list of projects for fiscal year '22, '23. SB 1 was enacted in April 2017 and provides for additional funding from fuel taxes and vehicle registration taxes for broad range of transportation projects. Eligible projects include basic roadway maintenance and roadway rehabilitation projects and critical safety projects. To receive the RMRA funds, the city must demonstrate program effectiveness and maintain public support of transportation infrastructure taxation. We're required to adopt and forward the resolution to the California, or we're actually supposed to forward to the California Transportation Commission, a list of projects for the fiscal year '22, '23 to be funded by the RMRA. Our focus remains on implementing the payment management program to ensure revenues are used in cost-effective manner. Before you is the list of projects. They are the same projects that were approved on June 8th for the fiscal year '22, '23 budget in our SB 1 program. The total amount of the projects is $5,804,488. The revenues we anticipate and are forecasted by the state are $4,29,048 by the adopted resolution. Our carryforward from the '21, '22 fiscal year is $1,880,372, so we anticipate having $5,909,420. So this time next year, we should have only about $100,000 in that program left over. However, the city's tax, the exact RMRA fund amount and the revenues will depend on the actual state tax receipts and will be remitted on a monthly basis. So upon the receipt of the funds, monies will be deposited into the revenue account within the gas tax fund. We are required to comply with maintenance of effort. That amount is about $2.2 million each year with the gisting funds in the proposed streets. I was at the CTEC meeting just last month, and the city did meet that goal, so we're moving forward in accordance with the program. Also, May 9th, we went before the planning commission with the budget, and within that budget is the SB 1 program, and the planning commission determined that it is in compliance and projects are in compliance with the general plan. And that is also a requirement of SB 1 that we take into our planning commission. So staff is recommending that City Council adopt a resolution appropriating $4,29,048 in road maintenance and rehabilitation account RMRA funds provided by SB 1. And we also ask that you approve the city's list of projects for fiscal year '22, '23. If you have any more questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
There's no request to speak on this item.
Thank you. Back to the council.
Move approval.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 38, adoption of a resolution for the Transnet Local Street Improvement Program of projects for the City of Oceanside in the 2023 Regional Transportation Improvement Program, RTIP. We have another report from Mr. Toshack?
Toshack.
Toshack, okay.
That's right. Honorable Mayor, council members, David Toshack, Principal Civil Engineer, Development Services Department. Sorry about the long title, but Transnet Local Streets Improvement Program for the projects for the 2023 Regional Transportation Improvement Program fiscal years 2023 through 2027. Staff is recommending that City Council adopt a resolution for the Transit Local Street Improvement Program projects, the POP, the City of Oceanside, for the upcoming 2023 Regional Transportation Improvement Program. Every five years, the county's Metropolitan Planning Organization, the San Diego Associated Government, Sandag, is required by state and federal law to develop an RTIP, a Regional Transportation Improvement Plan. Local agencies, including the city of Oceanside, are required to update the POP and the RTIP every two years. The RTIP defines an anticipated medium-term program of regionally significant projects. The current RTIP is from fiscal year 2018 through 2022. And in May, you, council, approved the 2021 POP by amendment to include the fiscal years, this fiscal year's 2023 CIP budget, the funding we anticipate receiving to spend on those projects. So we've done that just recently. This adoption of the resolution is for the upcoming 2023 RTIP that covers 2023 through '27. It doesn't become effective until September '23. Sandag and both federal government have to approve the plan before it gets enacted, so it's going to take some time before that becomes effective. And then the new RTIP for 2023, we have no significant new projects. So what you see here are a list of projects that I think most of you are familiar with. We have two bridges across the San Luis Rey River and Douglas and Coast Highway. We have the detention basins along Altaloma Creek. We have reoccurring projects with miscellaneous traffic markings, neighborhood sidewalks, ADA ramps. We have our slurry seal and our overlay. Continuing on, we have one-time projects like the College Boulevard Design and Construction, Coast Highway to Quarter Design, and then Altaloma Bike Trail that'll take the trail out to Melrose, and then Bicycle Committee is a new position too. So rounding up the list, we have, again, reoccurring projects, ADA ramp replacements, sidewalk infill projects, residential safety improvement projects, and then, again, one-off projects, the El Corzo North Roundabout Construction, the coastal rail trail design that we're finishing up, and then the Pierview Way pedestrian bridge renovation. The Berr Avenue forecast, again, we're looking at 2023 at just around $5.6 million, steadily increasing through 2027 to about just under $6.4 million. So staff is recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution for the Transit Local Street Improvement POP for the City of Oceanside in the 2023 RTIP. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
There are no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. To the council, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Quick question. The five big moves that was approved, I didn't vote to support it, but the majority-weighted vote approved at Sandag, because I'm the Sandag representative. It approved with the expectation of funding mechanisms to include two sales tax increases that have not been put on the ballot. And the public ballot measure that, you know, behind the scenes was hoping to go on the ballot, didn't get enough signatures. And so my question, and really, you may not have the answer, but I kind of want to make staff aware, and I don't know if it will impact this RTP, RTIP, excuse me. Without those funding mechanisms and their planning and their allocations, how is that going to impact us as a city, is I guess my question. You don't have to answer tonight, but there's going to be some lack of funding at Sandag because they failed to get it on the ballot, and we don't really have enough time as a board to make that happen. And so I want to know if that's going to eventually affect some of these allocations as we head into the near future.
Yeah, constabulary is, we don't know that. The revenues that we have are basically projections that we received early in the year, just around January, February, and, again, they're projections, that's what we have. So with the process, again, through September, and we're looking at Sandag's approval before it goes to the federal government, definitely things could change. Our program, you know, most of our monies that transit are going into a lot of the projects, and a significant amount is going into our overlay and slurry seal programs. They're very flexible programs, so we could modify our projects and scope of work to accommodate whatever revenues we'll receive.
Awesome. Thank you for that. I move approval.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. On to item number 42, which are communications for the public regarding items not on this agenda. We have eight requests to speak.
That is correct. As I call your name, we have two podiums and seating in the front. You're more than welcome to talk at either podium. Our first speaker is Arlene Hammerschmidt, to be followed by Fernando Garcia, to be followed by Sally Leeper, to be followed by Jimmy Nott.
Okay, yes, it is on. Okay, Arlene Hammerschmidt, Rarilish Fire Mountain. I have been doing a little research into Parks and Recreation following the AdHOC Committee Meeting on May 17th, I believe it was. This is a lot of it. There was a lot that came out. I know that you've already read my email. Bottom line, I respectfully request, at the very least, a full audit of our Parks and Recreation Department in light of the discrepancies and inconsistencies I discovered while analyzing the results of four public records requests. How much income did the city lose because Parks and Recreation Admin incorrectly classified Coastal Academy's user group classification as OUSD-B when calculating the funds? My amateur audit estimate is between almost $83,000 and almost $109,000. This is given what I could discern from the receipts and permits granted to Coastal Academy. We know, so also, how is the city and when will the city recover this financial loss? How was Coastal Academy given this sweetheart prices? Facts that we know that are related, Mr. Mark Olson was hired August of 2018. Coastal Academy is not an OUSD school and never was eligible for joint use agreement classification, which the rest of the stuff, I'm just, we know these facts, you've read them. OUSD joint use agreement expired in September of '21. There has been no joint use agreement since that time, September of '21, to date. So background, how are fees determined that people pay when they want to rent a facility or a field? I'm sorry this is so small, but this is what we got. What this says, underlined in green, is Parks and Recreation will administratively decide which priority class a user group will be identified as based on the previous year's user group's descriptions, and shall have this information described on a priority class description form, which I have asked for, but I don't know if I'm going to get. This is the table by which Parks and Rec is supposed to make the decision. By my amateur estimation and descriptions, I would think they would fit with either G or H, but they're certainly not B, so maybe they're F. And in this stack of information that I got, they've been classified as OUSD-B, H, and F. So my numbers coming up are going to be related to those and compared by those two, three classifications. Thank you for your quiet attention. What I have noticed on, oh, Lord, three minutes already.
Yes.
What I've noticed on these two forms--
Thank you very much, Arlene.
--is that aquatics is missing. So how's public supposed to figure this out?
Thank you very much.
Please, please investigate.
Okay. Before I call the next person-- Who is? Mr. Garcia. I want to first announce that item number 43 is being continued by council members Rodriguez and Jensen. I see staff is here on this item. I didn't see you earlier, my apologies, because it wasn't that long ago that Councilmember Rodriguez said, because of the lateness of the hour, he wanted to continue. So I just saw you a few minutes ago, my apologies. Okay, thank you. And then, one more thing, Mr. Garcia, if you don't mind. Before the end of the evening, I wanted to ask Chief Robinson and Chief Parsons to come on down, because we did have an announcement earlier yesterday about our new fire chief that will be taking over upon Chief Robinson's retirement. So could you guys come on down? And I want to congratulate you both on retirement and also on resuming, assuming, this new office. So thank you very, I know you guys look tired, because, you know, we're all tired here, too. But you've been here the whole night, and I should have stopped at some point earlier to thank you so much for everything, for all the work that you did, Chief Robinson, as our fire chief for how many years? Six years. And Chief Parsons, I don't know if you want to say just a few things real quick? Again.
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, and members of the council. I'm, I just honestly, I'm very humbled and privileged by this opportunity to follow, first of all, a great man who's helped mentor me, and I appreciate that. I live in Oceanside, Loma Alta, and this is a privilege for me to serve you, to serve the council, and my commitment is to serve you selflessly and honorably. I'll keep it simple and keep it at that, and please reach out to my office on August 1st. He's still my boss.
August 1st, guys, yeah.
And I pledge to be of service to you and this community. Thank you.
Alls I want to do is thank the council, thank the citizens of Oceanside for allowing me to be your fire chief for the last six years. Wrapping up a 45-year career in the fire service, and we've lived, we've been Oceanside residents for 34 years, my wife and I and our kids, and I just can't think of a better way to end a career and to be right here in Oceanside, and we plan on sticking around for a while. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Thank you. Now, Mr. Garcia, my apologies--
Oh, no worries.
Fernando Garcia.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. As a resident of Oceanside, first of all, my retired reign, 20 years, my standards of conduct and ethics are really high, so I'm very, very happy that you all signed a document that stated that. So what I'm bringing up to you is something very unpleasant, something I discovered, and I'm bringing it up to your attention, or basically to Councilmember Jensen, is the fact that going through, I'm a member of a lot of groups on social media, and we get together, political groups, like that, and we talk about different political things, and you all, because you all represent us. So we talk about that, and I'm bringing something up to your attention I found troubling that I discovered yesterday about Ms. Jensen's two properties that I want to bring up here, that I showed up here. I just want you, in the interest of, in the interest of transparency, to give you the opportunity to explain to us the situation, because it says, according to me and my impression, it says that you have delinquent property taxes in your Oceanside home, and also are claiming a homestand exemption in a car's bed home. So I find that troubling, and, you know, what is it, appearances, reality, or, and it appears to me that you're delinquent in your taxes. So I wanted to extend this opportunity to you and maybe clarify things and explain it to, you know, the voters, because I understand you're also going to be, you're running for your seat, right? Or, yeah. So before we stand behind you, please explain to the voters, either here or later, why that is, or if it's incorrect, just, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to explain yourself to the voters. So that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have copies here, you want? You want?
Sally Leeper?
Hi, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Sally Leeper. I'm the president of the State Malo Heights Homeowners Association. I'm the president of the State Malo Heights Homeowners Association, and our small community needs our city's help. Residents of our community are in grave danger of losing our homes to fire. Our quality of life is greatly affected from homeless encampments on our private, and I reiterate, private property. We have had three fires in about the last 14 months endangering our homes, and most importantly, our families. Transients are homeless, some who are known felons, according to our police department, are pitching tents, doing drugs, and making so much noise at night that the quality of our residents' sleep is disturbed. The foul language is crass and offensive. Frequently, people are seen urinating or defecating on our property. A dead body last week was found after the fire and by a gentleman who apparently had blown up a propane tank on the property while he was, as I understand it, involved with So in the past, we have arranged for police sweeps and then cleanups at our expense. Just last week, we were able to finally arrange another police sweep after attempting to make those arrangements for nine months. That cost our association $4,000 for cleanup. And because of the delay in the cleanups, now we have a huge encampment, so the cost of the cleaning up is even greater. And our small community just does not have the financial resources to keep covering these expenses. With budget cuts and a shortage of officers, it is next to impossible to swat, to schedule a sweep of the canyon. The last one took over nine months to coordinate. We have to, and we are asking you, to help us find resources, to find a solution to this very grave problem. The police response has changed. Police officers will not respond at night because of safety issues unless it is a dire emergency. So if we have the noise, if we have the people swearing, drinking, doing drugs, we can't do anything about it. If they're called during the day and they respond with one person, even though the person is standing there right on our private property, they won't do anything about it unless they have backup. So I have requested backup, and they tell me that there is not police staff to call for backup.
Thank you, Ms. Leeper. I'm going to ask that Mr. Gosman meet you outside, and he helps out, he, he actually is a person within the city manager's office who works with police department, fire department on the homeless encampments.
Okay.
So if, if you could do that, that would be great.
Okay, may I just add one thing?
Yes.
With all due respect, I would like to say that getting a response from some of the offices, I have emailed your office particularly twice and have not even received response, not even a, you know, a pre-printed blurb saying we got your mail. So it's a frustration, we can't get a hold of anybody. Code enforcement is no longer responding. So our lives are in danger, and we really request your help, and I'll step outside and follow up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Can I add something to that really quick? Michael, myself and Councilmember Jensen, we're actually meeting neighbors in that community. I believe it's scheduled next week, so maybe we can invite them, or we'll coordinate with, with my council aide.
You could speak with him afterwards.
And I could speak with you to, because we're, I'm meeting them in the community to discuss some of those concerns.
Okay. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane, and La Salina Mobile Village homeowners representative. First off, I just wanted to address a concern that was brought up the last meeting. I wasn't able to attend because I had a knee injury. First is that we have, the city of Oceanside has assumed the Title 25 powers under HCD, and they will take me soon that they have given notice to the parks that they will be doing the Title 25 inspections, which means about two parks out of the 17 parks that are in Oceanside. And there is an issue that was brought up by a couple of council members to my colleagues who represent some of the parks about how that would take place if there's a violation of a homeowner, a senior or elderly or a low-income homeowner. And it's very clear into that highlighted area that the city will have to take and make a list of that type of help. And that's according to Health and Safety Code Division 13.21, Chapter 3.5, Notice of Violations, 1840, 420, and that's down at the B2. But I wanted to bring up an issue that maybe you might be able to take and help along. Now that the redevelopment agencies, as you all know, have been basically eliminated, the state has brought up a new one where the specific person, purpose is to take and help rehab homes and take and provide other means, and I would encourage you to look And that is the enhanced infrastructure financing district. It does not have to be contiguous. It could be like, as an example, all 17 mobile home parks. This way, you could take and cover it with, just covering the 17 mobile home parks with the express purpose, and you can express the purpose of the main parts for the district. I would take and just mention it to you so that you can investigate it and see if it could be applied, and that would be another arm of assistance to help out. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Parker.
Yeah, good evening, honorable mayor and city council. Shelley Parker, Rancho San Luis Rey. So I sent earlier in the day to all of you a link to a TED Talk about mobile home parks, and I'm encouraging you here, I waited, so I wanted to say, please watch it. It is enlightening, and it is, our city is, has the unique ability to, to provide housing affordability through the mobile home parks, and it's not something that has to be subsidized. Individuals have invested, and I'm here to remind you that I would like for you to protect it. We have investor park owners coming in, and things are being, our way of life is being attacked, as well as, it was wonderful what Jimmy said. I had written to Mr. Borrego after the last meeting. I did not receive an email response for him. I actually figured out, I, I spent my life in finances, financial running of corporations, and I figured out a way that we could get park owners and that kind of thing to help pay for the $149,000 code enforcement as a subsidy, the code enforcement three officer. So I really actually will email you again, and I would like to have a meeting, since you had said you were going to meet with Linda Walshaw concerning some of the issues and the, the fear that people had. We all, there is also other members who actually live in mobile home parks in this city. She does not. I would like to be heard as an equal in that, and so I, I would like for you to, to look at that, that TED Talk that I sent, and thank you very much. It was worth the wait. I learn something every time I come to city council.
Thank you, Shelley. Katie Taylor.
I gotta squeeze one thing in here real quick, because I want to have some good news for you guys, and I want to give it to you tonight. You've been beat up, you need some, okay? Okay, regarding Councilmember Cory Jensen and the political hit job that was just placed on her. I have a long, deep background working for financial institutions, including Wells Fargo Bank. Ms. Jensen asked me to review her documents regarding Wells Fargo's not paying her property taxes to an impound account. I looked through numerous documents, and they were hard as a paper trail to go through. I spoke personally with her permission on the phone to Wells Fargo. It is absolutely their mistake. I think she has a absolute grounds to sue Wells Fargo as she chose, and a special person has been assigned to the case. So everybody with your political hit jobs, back off, because I'm an expert at this, and anybody wants me to sign a document that say I did just what I told you I did, I will have it notarized and sent to this council. Now for the good news. I want to thank the city staff and city council again for moving so swiftly to close Lagoon View Road. And I, this will make you really happy. I spoke last night at the Carlsbad City Council meeting and bragged about the city of Oceanside and how quickly they worked to resolve a problem. And it was my great pleasure to tell them, you could, guys could do the same. You can move faster, too. So I just thought you'd enjoy that. I'm looking forward to hearing staff recommendations on how we solve problems with now the shopping carts. I know they're working on it, but I just want to show you a few pictures, that once we get shopping carts resolved, what we can get going here. So this is just a picture I took January, oop, can you get, where they can see it? This is the kind of stuff that we're going to stop because we're closing Lagoon View Road. Shopping carts, hopefully, that's just one right there in the center median, right when you're going to Walmart. These are the gentlemen who greeted me that day, that I was, where, that are sitting on Lagoon View Road with their shopping cart and mess. Here's a picture from the 20th, the 21st. There's a big homeless encampment right on the Jefferson Street Bridge, and the PD was there first to, there was, there must have been 12 shopping carts right there, right there on the bridge. And they obviously took action and moved the person out, then followed up by Caltrans, who came in and started cleaning up the encampment. That encampment, the trash and shopping carts were all down the side, that's the east side of the bridge there. This was taken today. Today's the 22nd, right? So, this is once again Lagoon View Road, and that's a shopping cart and people living down there with their shopping carts. Here's more.
Thank you.
But I want to tell you, I gave you a big shout out at the city of Carlsbad.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie. Sandra Martinez, and then Zamir Karim. He's long.
I think he may be gone by now.
Okay, so Ms. Martinez, you're the last one.
Thanks. Saving the best for last, right? Last week, the FDA authorized the emergency use of the Moderna and Pfizer vaccines for six-month-old babies to five-year-old children. The data from the trial doesn't support this decision, and I urge every parent considering these injections to dig deep into the trial data and listen to what all scientists and doctors are saying, not Joe, just those funded by companies or agencies with financial interest. On Saturday, I watched the four-hour pre-FDA presentation. It was appalling and horrifying. I personally have had 14 friends die from the COVID shots, including a healthy 15-year-old boy who died suddenly. I would like to put my head, yeah, I would prefer to put my head in the sand and ignore what's going on, but I can't. It's a very sensitive and emotional issue, but we need to talk about it. In the trials, there were 4,526 children. 3,000, or two-thirds, did not finish the trial. On that basis alone, the trial should have been deemed null and void. There were seven children who were defined as having severe COVID. Six were vaccinated and one was not. Based on their own data, children who get vaccinated are more likely to get COVID. However, the FDA chose to ignore the data. There was one child with fever and seizure. This child was vaccinated. They ignored that data. During the three weeks between the first and second doses of the vaccine, 34 vaccinated and 13 unvaccinated tested positive for COVID, meaning there's a 300% greater chance of getting COVID if you're vaccinated. That data was ignored. 12 children caught COVID twice. 11 were vaccinated and one was unvaccinated. That data was ignored. 97% of the COVID that occurred during the trials was ignored. The statistics were cherry picked until the desired results were found. The entire efficacy is based on 10 cases of COVID. I don't think people should be making life-altering decisions based on 10 cases, 10 selected cases. For severe adverse reactions, the evaluation group considered the data unreliable. This was also ignored for the decision. There is no long-term safety data for children, children. The study ended after 45 days, and at that point, the group was unblinded, the control group was unblinded, unblinded, which means they got the vaccine. So we have no idea what's going to happen. There's a real possibility of lifelong impairment, neurological harm, infertility, and even the death of a child or baby. We need your help. We need the city's help to help inform people and make awareness. I hope you'll support us in this.
Thank you very much. Item number 44, which is adoption of an ordinance authorizing the city to implement community choice energy, and this is the second reading. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Please title.
This is adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside establishing community choice aggregation in the city of Oceanside.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 401. Rodriguez, no.
Thank you. General council member comments, anybody? 9:25. I just want to say, congratulations to all the graduates and their families. It's been a great month, and see you on Saturday, which is our Freedom Day Parade. See you Saturday. So adjourn this meeting to August 10th, where it's, council's taking a whole month off. So August 10th, 2022, 3:30. Meeting adjourned. Bye.